Good morning. I'd like to call the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Commissioner White, good morning, sir. Can you hear me? Can you turn your mic up a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White, would you please lead us into invocation and prayers? Will everyone please stand?
Yes, sir. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in reciting the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we conduct important business this morning. I pray that you will continue to bless Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Merman as they move on to the next chapter. I pray that you will see to it that they stay involved in our communities and continue to do good things. As always, Lord, I pray for our armed forces and first responders, pray that you'll keep them safe and guide them each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you very much, Commissioner White. Do we have a roll called establish a court?
Good morning, Miller.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a court.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone that's in the boardroom to, as long as you're in the boardroom, please keep your mask on. Please, please, keep your mask on. We have no proclamations. Ms. Wise, good morning. Any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We have several items for time certain today. At 9:30, item E1, we have a presentation by Tyler Martinovich, Executive Director of the Tampa Hillsborough Film and Digital Media Commission regarding the state of film and digital media in Hillsborough County. At 9:45, item C1, we will receive a briefing on the impacts of Tropical Storm Ada. At 9:45, item E2, we will have the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. 9:45, item G2, we will receive a report from management and budget regarding an update on COVID-19 programs and activities. At 9:45, item B2, we will adopt a resolution which recommends the routine testing of staff at nursing homes, assisted living facilities, intermediate care facilities, and group homes related to COVID-19. Item E3, at 10:15 a.m., there will be a special appearance by the University of South Florida Alumni Association, and at 10:30 a.m. will be the B.O.C.C. farewell ceremony. Mr. Chairman, those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes.
Move the changes.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested, at the same time when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing an online public comment forum found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online forum. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The chair will call on speakers by name in order in which they have completed the online public comment forum. Prior authorization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it is received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the chair by name. After three minutes are allowed for each speaker, citizens speaking of scheduled agenda items will be heard before speakers speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. On addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Our first speaker is Diana Klein.
Good morning. This is Diana Klein. I'm here today to address the unconstitutional, unwarranted local state of emergency order that you have imposed on the residents of Hillsborough County. There is no pandemic. It's evident from the past four-month-long proven 99% recovery rate of the coronavirus that we are not in a local state of emergency. There are 1.4 million residents in Hillsborough County, and more than 99% of residents who contract coronavirus have survived it just like the flu. This is not a pandemic. It's also clear from the Hillsborough COVID dashboard that we are not in a local state of emergency. Tampa General Hospital admittance and bed occupancy numbers are way down, and more evidence is coming out that the testing kits are faulty and producing false positive, which means none of the cases can be trusted. It's time for you to govern with righteous judgment. God's Word says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when a wicked man rules, the people groan," Proverbs 29:2. The residents of Hillsborough County are groaning from your unrighteous decree. You need to make a motion and vote to end the COVID state of emergency order and mask mandate that's on the agenda in today's meeting, and then proceed to resume normal business. The numbers prove over and over and over that we are not in a state of emergency. By the true sense of what constitutes an actual state of emergency, we are not in a state of emergency. In addition, there's no reason for anyone to live in fear of a virus. God has provided a way for us to easily dismantle and inhibit all viruses from replicating in our body if we have plenty of vitamin C, D, zinc, prebiotics, and probiotics in our bloodstream. And you can find out more information on this at freedomfromcoronavirus.com. In closing, you need to know that your greatest need is forgiveness, and Jesus is the only one who can forgive you. God's Word says that we have all fallen short of His glory and that the wages of our sin against God is death, which is permanent separation from Him. But because God has so loved the world, He has provided the perfect blood sacrifice to atone for our sins. But it's only those who repent of the rebellion against God and receive Jesus' blood sacrifice as their full payment of their sin debt who are the ones who will be saved and inherit everlasting life beyond the appointed day of death in the earth. I pray you come into the saving knowledge of Jesus Christ and find rest for your soul. He is the King of kings. He is the Prince of peace. He is your only hope. Thank you.
Be with you. Speaker, next speaker is Travis Hearn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I believe I was scheduled to be on the, one of the agenda items, B, B4.
I'm sorry. It wasn't listed that way. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. They wanted to speak. They should speak now.
Okay. I'm trying to, they didn't list them what they wanted to speak on. They just gave me the names. I don't know who wants to speak on B4 from the list they gave me or not. So, I don't, I don't have a list in here of which ones of B4. They just gave me names of people to speak, so that's why I'm just calling the names.
Yeah, but it's not a public hearing before, so they should just speak at public comment now.
All right. If you want to speak on B4, it's time to speak now. So let me go back and see if Bill, Bill Place.
Bill, are you there? Sir, Bill doesn't seem to be responding.
Go ahead and speak, Mr. Place.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Is that, is that?
No, no comment at this point. I'm just here for any questions.
Okay. What about Travis Hearn?
Yeah, Commissioners, this is Travis Hearn. I'm here. I'm, I'm Bill Place's attorney. I'm representative for the applicant for the Brownfield designation, so I just thought I would, you know, come into the meeting, introduce myself. We'll be at the meetings for the, you know, the subsequent hearings for the designation and just, you know, be available if the Commissioners have any questions or there's anything to discuss. So, other than that, I have no comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Norma Robinson.
Yes, good morning. Norma Robinson from Sofa Springs. I'm representing the Sofa Springs Museum and Heritage Center. First, as a citizen of Tampa, I want to thank you for your many years of service. We really appreciate you being available to us. And on behalf of the Sofa Springs Museum, we want to thank you for your years of support. You've lent us coming out to our exhibits, our openings. And finally, I want to wish you enjoyment in your quote-unquote retirement. After serving so long, this is a rest that you truly deserve, and I hope you enjoy your golf, and we look forward to seeing you around. Thank you so much again, and may God bless you in all the things that you do and continue to do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and you keep up the good work out there in Sofa Springs. You made a big difference out there, a major difference, and we appreciate all that you've done, so please, please, keep it up, and we'll be seeing each other soon. Thank you. Susan Morgan.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Susan Morgan from Grace Point. Today, I'm speaking as a member of the Tobacco-Free Partnership and on behalf of our board chair, Rooney Patel, who isn't able to attend this morning's meeting. As the Chair of the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Hillsborough County, I'd like to share the various initiatives our partnership is working on to decrease the use of tobacco and prevention countywide. Though COVID-19 is at the forefront of our minds, it is vital to highlight awareness of countywide efforts surrounding tobacco sensation and prevention. We are looking to increase our partnership efforts with organizations around the county, encourage collaboration, and encourage and engage with potential policy champions such as yourselves. Currently, our partnership consists of local university faculty, some from the University of South Florida and the University of Tampa, American Lung Association, the American Heart Association, Moffitt Cancer Center, Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, Concerned County Residents, and many more. And this year, we look forward to working with Hillsborough County School District to implement a program called In Depth. This program teaches students about nicotine dependence and its alternatives to suspension that is offered to students in violation of school tobacco or e-cigarette policies. In addition, our Not on Tobacco program helps to address the increasing issue of vaping teens by giving them the resources they need to break nicotine dependency and find healthier outlets. Considering the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the prohibition on the sale, possession, and use of vaping-generating electronic devices and vaping products to the age of 21 last year, I applaud your efforts in reducing the use of tobacco use in Hillsborough County. And on behalf of our partnership, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning, and on behalf of Rooney Patel, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Alan Hanson.
Yes, good morning. I'm Alan Hanson with Texas Roadhouse at 2550 South Falkenburg Road. Today, I'd like to talk about the conditional use permit for the alcoholic beverage sales in our restaurant. I'd like to request an accommodation that the land use hearing officer not wait the 15 business days to render the order for our conditional use permit for the alcoholic beverage sales in our new restaurant set to open in early December. We had requested this permit in a timely manner, and COVID delays have pushed this hearing back until what was supposed to be today. If the hearing were today, we would have been able to open by our goal date in December with our permit in hand. However, due to this B.O.C.C. meeting, our hearing has been pushed back seven days. That with the Thanksgiving holiday, the timing of this permit request could be pushed a total of 24 days. This is 24 additional days plus the COVID delays that have slowed us from our original goal of opening. I know that we cannot control the COVID delays, and I know we are all sick of hearing about them. The resound industry is aware of this as much as anyone. However, this is one accommodation that I know the board has the power to make. The Affordable Housing Project has shown that there is past precedent to be able to speed up this permit. This is a very small accommodation on your end, but will be an enormous help for our business, for our staff, and for the community at large. While I know this is a very straightforward request, this delay will have significant financial ramifications on not only our restaurant, but on the 230-plus employees who are hoping to start this new job before the Christmas holiday. We are talking about $300,000 that we are delaying for the business, and that is not including the tips that our servers and bartenders would surely be making. I do appreciate your time and willingness to help us out as a local business, as well as the hundreds of employees and residents that are looking forward to working or dining at this location. Again, I ask that the land use hearing officer not wait 15 business days to render the order for our conditional use permit for the sales of alcoholic beverages for Texas Roadhouse at 2550 South Falkenburg Road. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the last speaker I have on my list. Is there any other speakers that have signed in?
We do have one more person, Sue Ann Morgan, who was number nine but had a different name listed on the list.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sue Ann Morgan.
Hi, my name is Sue Ann Morgan. Good morning. I'm calling in behalf of Steve Rettles. I'm with the, I'm an intern with Benedictine University, member of the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Hillsborough County. As the past Chair of Tobacco-Free Partnership of Hillsborough County, I'm reaching out in efforts to implement this program by the partners with other organizations around the county to encourage collaboration and encourage with potential policy champions. Currently, our partnership consists of local universities such as the University of South Florida, UTE, American Lung Association, American Heart Associations, Moffitt Cancer Centers, Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, Concerned County Residents, and more. Though COVID-19 is at the forefront of our minds, it is to highlight awareness of our countywide efforts surrounding tobacco sensations and prevention. This year, we look forward to working with the Florida Department of Health in Hillsborough County to implement one of our programs called In Depth developed by the American Lung Association, which teaches students about the nicotine dependence and an alternative to suspension that is offered to students who face suspensions for violation of school tobaccos or e-cigarettes policies. This is a nationally recognized program that will have immediate impact on our youth and their health. In addition, we also offer a program called Not, Not on Tobacco, program though the American Lung Association's to help address the increasing issue of teens who vape by giving them the resources they need to break nicotine dependency and find healthier outlets. Considering the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the prohibition of the sale, possession, and use of vaping device in, in Hillsborough County. Sincerely, Steve Rettles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other speakers that have signed up that have joined us? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve the consent agenda. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few minutes before our 9:30 item, so we can go to item B1, which is an approved agreement with Catholic Charities for Affordable Housing. Cheryl Howell is here for this item.
Ms. Howell, good morning. You're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing. I am asking the board this morning to approve the Coronavirus Relief Fund Funding Agreement between Catholic Charities in Hillsborough County for the acquisition and rehab of 20 affordable housing units known as the Carol Motel down in Ruskin, for households at or below 80% of area median income and who are experiencing homelessness as a result of COVID-19. This agreement will be effective upon execution by the parties and shall remain in effect until December 30th, 2020. The expenditure deadline for this agreement is November, is November 30th, 2020. And also, we're asking to approve the land use restriction agreement between Catholic Charities in Hillsborough County restricting the use of the 20 setaside units for households under 80% for a, a period of time not less than 15 years. And this agreement is being funded with $1,250,000 from the Coronavirus Relief Fund from the State of Florida, Florida Housing Finance Corporation.
Motion's a pleasure.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B1. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item B3. This is to adopt a resolution amending the fee schedule for the building and construction services, and Adam Gormley will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Development Services Department. Item B3 is a request to amend the fee schedule for building and construction services. This is the fee schedule that relates to building permitting. We're requesting two changes, one of which is to combine certain fees into one, they're all existing fees and are currently listed and charged separately. As part of our implementation of the Acela permitting system, we're looking to have these combined as one fee. They're all currently charged, and we feel that this will create better transparency to our fee schedule and listing the actual cost for these permit types. It will also facilitate the timing of implementation of Acela as the configuration that we're using currently has those fees combined. The second change is to create a second appendix in addition to appendix one. This would be an appendix that would relate to alterations to existing structures currently called tenant improvements on our existing appendix one in the fee schedule. This will, this fee change will make the additions set at 60% of the cost of new construction. Because of the way the current fee schedule is structured, we believe that there is relative inequity between the permit fee for new structures relative to additions to existing structures. This will result in a revenue decrease of approximately $630,000 for FY '21. This is a fee, this reduction in revenue can be absorbed by the building fee schedule, and it is our intent that when we have the Acela automation system up and running, that we're going to do a wholesale fee study on our building, building fee schedule to account for efficiencies that the Acela system will bring, as well as reflect the technology costs that are associated with that system. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B3. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item B4. This is for a Brownfield designation for Pebble Creek Golf Club. Jaxa Petrovic is here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Jaxa Petrovic, Corporate Business Development Manager, Hillsborough County Economic Development Department. On July 20th, 2020, Ace Golf Force Inc., Ace Golfing submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel at 10550 Regions Park Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33647, as a Brownfield area. The proposed property consists of 150 acres and is shown on the projected map. I think my monitor might have disconnected which is why this is not sharing. You guys see the map now?
No, not yet.
Jaxa, we are not seeing it yet. Is it back on? Now it is up. It is up, Jaxa. Please proceed. Just one second. Okay. So the map is on. Florida statutes require public announcement of the community meeting and two public hearings to designate a Brownfield. The proposed community meeting is set to be on November 30th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at Pebble Creek Golf Club located at 10550 Regions Park Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33647. The two proposed public hearings are set to be on December 2nd, 2020, and December 16th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting in Hillsborough County Board, County Commissioners' Boardroom on 2nd floor Frederick V. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. Staff recommendation is to authorize setting a community meeting and the two public hearings as proposed. Staff is also requiring, requesting a waiver of statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after 5:00 p.m. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 p.m., and B.O.C.C. will be provided with a full transcript of the public comment at the community meeting. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by, who's the second?
Me.
Commissioner Merman to approve item B4. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item B5, to approve a budget amendment regarding the CARES Act funding balance. Kevin Bricky will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. B5 is asking you to approve an FY '21 budget amendment to adjust the CARES Act fund balance carry forward, increasing it by $11.8 million, and appropriating the same amount within the CARES Act fund. Each year as we build the budget, we estimate ending fund balance, and expenditure rates are sometimes faster or slower than we estimated, and that's this case. And as a result, $11.8 million more carried forward to the CARES Act fund, and this is appropriating it in order that we can spend it by the December 30th federal date. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, it's a pleasure.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B5. Seeing to further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Commissioners, we have just one more regular agenda item. I would recommend that we complete this before going to our time certain items. Item B6, it is a procurement item. Scott Stromer will present this item.
Mr. Stromer, good morning.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B6 is asking the board to award an
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B six is asking the board to award and execute an agreement with the overall lowest response of a responsible bidder, Prince Contracting LLC, for construction of the Apollo Beach Extension for the Capital Programs Department, a total cost of twenty million, four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Additionally, the board's being asked to approve a fiscal year twenty-one budget amendment resolution, which will accept and appropriate five point seven five million dollars from the Florida Department of Transportation County Incentive Grant Program and realign ten million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the Developer Contribution Fund and two million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand and seven hundred and ninety-one dollars from the Mobility Fee District Four Fund to meet the grant met requirement for the project. An aspirational goal of ten point six five percent for disadvantaged business enterprise participation was established by the Florida Department of Transportation for the project, and the recommended firm is committed to meeting or exceeding that goal. Procurement Services Department does recommend approval.
Mr. Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And all I can say is, I know Lucy and John are probably listening, but hallelujah. This is finally getting done. So those of you out there, yes, sometimes it takes a long time to make sausage, but this road's going to be a great east-west extension, something that's very needed in South County to take the load off Big Bend Road, and I'm just couldn't be more thrilled this is going forward and just say, hurry up and get done. Thanks.
Want to make a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B six as we make sausage. Senator, for discussion, please call the row.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman. Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
That's wise.
Commissioners, let's go to the item E one, the nine thirty time certain for the presentation from the Hillsborough Film and Digital Media Commission. Commissioner Hagan would like to present this item initially.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to make a couple introductory comments before we hear the presentation, and then I'd also like to be recognized after the presentation's finished. But Tyler and our Film Commission have really done a remarkable job of growing this industry since this board approved our Film Commission. To put it in perspective, since two thousand and thirteen, seventy-one million dollars in direct spending has resulted from the support of film and digital media within Hillsborough County. Tampa and Hillsborough County really have taken a leadership role amongst its peers and is now nationally recognized as one of the top three filming destinations within our state. A top brand such as Mercedes-Benz, Louis Vuitton, Budweiser, and Toyota, just to name a few, have chosen Tampa Bay as a filming destination, thanks in large part to the world-class customer service the Film Commission provides and the talented crews and production companies that call Hillsborough County home. Now more than ever, I think we all know it's important to diversify our economy. In addition to being a tourism driver and a brand builder, what is all too often overlooked in this industry, particularly with our state legislature, is the technology element and the high wage, high-quality jobs associated with it. The industry state average for wages is eighty-one thousand dollars, which is sixty-four percent higher than the state's overall wage. So I always like to point that out because unfortunately it's overlooked in certain places. With that, I'll hand it back over to Bonnie if you want to introduce Tyler, and then again, when he finishes his presentation, I'd like to make a couple other remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. So we have Tyler Martinovich with the Film Commission here to present to you.
Thank you, Bonnie, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to share not only the good news that's coming out of our office, but also the results of a study that we had conducted earlier in the year. So let me share my screen. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so starting off with a little diagnosis of where we are as a Film Commission, some of this information's been already presented by Commissioner Hagan. We were founded in August of two thousand and thirteen. Since then, we've processed over thirteen hundred permits. Production and filming in Hillsborough County have brought in over seventy-one million dollars in economic spending. Hillsborough County is currently the third largest filming destination in the state behind Orlando and Miami, and Film Tampa Bay is currently the social media leader amongst all of its peers within the state and by a large margin at that. So why is film and digital media important to the overall economic health, not only of Florida, but nationally? These numbers are as recent as two thousand and eighteen, but film production has brought in seven, seven hundred and seventeen billion dollars in direct economic impact throughout the country, two point five million jobs directly and indirectly supported, ninety-three thousand businesses nationwide involved in the industry. And here in Florida, twenty-seven thousand jobs are directly supported by the film industry, and currently residents working in film and digital media have an average annual income of eighty-two thousand, which is sixty-five percent higher than the state's prevailing wage. Now, since we were, we had our inaugural year in two thousand and thirteen, we've been on a V-shaped curve as far as our progress as a Film Commission. We started off very strongly in fiscal fourteen, but that quickly started to deteriorate until fiscal seventeen, where we hit our previous low number of six million dollars in economic impact for that particular fiscal. I took over as the executive director starting in fiscal eighteen, and since then, we've been on an upward trajectory, thanks in large part to a reorganizing of our office, but also refocusing of our marketing efforts, doubling down on commercials. Towards the end of two thousand and nineteen, we felt that we were quickly reaching saturation point as a market, and we wanted to see what we could do to organically grow our available resources within the market, but also to strengthen our pitch to outside production companies to have them come here. As a result, we commissioned HCP and Associates to conduct a thorough study of the health of our local market and the region, also looking outward in some of our competitive states and what we can do. To that end, HCP and Associates conducted a thorough interview of hundreds of local production companies, along with dozens and dozens of in-person stakeholder meetings with some of our top production companies. And two things kept coming up over and over again. One, a lack of state incentives, and two, a lack of a sizable studio facility. And to that end, we have tried to address both of those issues, starting with the state incentive. We've not had a state incentive since two thousand and fifteen. We've lost a large number of productions as a result, but Hillsborough County has stepped up, as it always does, to try to address these issues, and we are now one of only six counties within the state that has either an incentive or a grant program offered to help attract local production companies, but also outside production companies. And we've been very, very successful with this program. In fact, we're only a month and a half into this fiscal, and we've already more or less given away all of our available funds for this upcoming fiscal year, thanks to a large queue of projects that were very helpful. We'll continue to film here in market. Now, the second issue was lack of studio space, and what the study identified was that we are hugely deficient in this area compared to our peer markets. If we look on this chart here, there's, there's three different categories of studios that you hope to attract in market, five hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, twenty-five hundred to ten thousand square feet, and ten thousand square feet and larger. And if we look at our main competitors within the state, Miami Dade County has forty-three total studio facilities, Orange County has nineteen, and Hillsborough with the anemic eight. And this is really inhibiting our ability to grow as a market. We have some smaller studio spaces, but if you see here circled in green, we have zero current studios within Hillsborough County of ten thousand square feet or larger, and this is a huge problem for our market, one that cannot be solved by a single production company, unfortunately. Studios are very expensive to not only set up, but maintain and run, and we need some assistance here to help continue to grow our market, or we're going to hit saturation point very quickly. And what does this mean? Ten thousand square feet is going to bring, or ten thousand square feet or more is going to bring larger productions to our market, productions like Mercedes-Benz, Louis Vuitton, Budweiser, top brands that need the space and scope to be able to film. Anecdotally, we had a very large Tostitos commercial that you may have seen where several players of the Bucks are featured in their childhood homes, eating Tostitos and talking to each other on the phone. This was filmed in Hillsborough County a couple of months ago, and unfortunately, we did not have any studio facility available that could have attracted this project, thanks in small part to the pandemic, and I hate even saying that. But because of the pandemic, the convention center was being unused at the time of this request, and we were able to rent out the entirety of the facility to be able to facilitate this multimillion-dollar commercial, and that shows the scope and size that a production of note really needs to be able to be facilitated. They took over two-thirds of the convention center just to be able to make that happen. So we need a facility comparable in size that can help sustain us to grow our market that we currently do not have. Now, why is this important to Hillsborough County? If you look at the total number of productions, you see, and these numbers are a little outdated. They were from February, but we're currently at over thirteen hundred projects served with over two hundred and fifty-five million dollars in spending. That's not just within Hillsborough County, but that's statewide. So we've only been able to capture about seventy-one million dollars of those total productions. So where are those productions going? They're going to Orlando. They're going to Miami because they have large studio facilities and deeper brick-and-mortar facilities that are able to facilitate the other half of the shoot that we're not able to do here. So we're losing a good chunk of business to other markets that we should be more competitive with. So we, the point of the study was to not only identify where we were deficient, obviously, we don't have the studio space, but also see how we can improve as a market, and the answer is, according to the study, investment in a studio facility of some type. And we tried looking at two comparable markets that we felt are where we're at currently, and that's Austin and New Orleans. And those sound like larger facilities, but we're talking about Austin and New Orleans from a very small sliver of time. So we're talking about Austin in nineteen eighty-five and New Orleans post-Katrina, two thousand and one. And in both cases, the local officials decided that film could be a sizable component to their recovery. In Austin, they created the Austin Film Society, which is a public-private partnership that has led to over eight hundred million dollars to the local economy, and what this was is a nonprofit that was set up to maintain membership and training and was given assistance through the county to create, form, and maintain studio facilities of a comparable size to markets of that time. Austin Film Society is also largely responsible to the film component of the South by Southwest Conference, which I believe everyone is familiar with. It's a huge economic driver to Austin, and in small part, they can thank the Austin Film Society for bringing the film and digital media component to that festival. Second is NOVAC, which is a program in New Orleans. Post-Katrina, they had a lot of crew and cast flee from the state to Georgia. To help the economy, the state of Louisiana created a film incentive, which helped in part, but they didn't have the crew to help out the productions and facilitate the productions that were coming as a result of the tax incentive. So NOVAC was created to train residents in film and digital media and then have them populate the various productions coming through as far as crew goes, and they've been hugely successful. NOVAC has deals with most of the major studios that now shoot in Louisiana to facilitate their crews and equipment needs, which is badly needed in the economic recovery of New Orleans for the time and has continued since. So the recommendations as the result of the study are that we are deficient in a studio, we need a studio facility, and we need help to create a facility of size and note that will help us be propelled into the future. Now, it's important to note that a box is no longer sufficient. A ten thousand square foot warehouse isn't going to get it done. We are well beyond where Austin was and Louisiana was in two thousand and one and eighty-five respectively. We need to be looking to technological solutions instead of square footage solutions, and there's plenty of ways to do that technologically, where we can take a ten thousand square foot facility and make it infinitely big as far as what's available on the screen to shoot. These are innovative ways that the film industry is continuing to grow, and it's an area that we need to focus on as a community if we want to stay relevant and more importantly, stay as an economic pillar of Hillsborough County, as I believe we are. There's also educational institutions that could directly benefit from a studio facility of size and note, not the least of which is University of Tampa and HCC. Both have phenomenal film programs and could badly use additional technologies and support that only a studio facility could provide to these various educational institutions. And that's important not only for the growth of their programs, but it's also important for the retention of these students. An anecdote I'd like to share is Florida State is one of the top film schools in the country, and last year of the thirty master's graduates, not a single one stayed in state, and that is an appalling statistic, and we don't want that to happen here in Hillsborough County. We want the people going through the programs, HCC and University of Tampa, to see film and digital media as a viable business to get into post-graduation here in the community and to stay long-term, to be productive residents to Hillsborough County. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hagan, but before I do, I just want to mention that the full study and the, the full study is available to the county. It's over a hundred pages. I would suggest everyone give it a look. There's some really good statistics, as well as local feedback as to what our strengths and weaknesses are. Again, that's available through the county. I've submitted it to Bonnie Weiss, and I'm sure she is able to get that to everyone who has a request for it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hagan.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Tyler, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Board members, the study you just heard clearly shows an opportunity for Hillsborough County to take the next step and join the ranks of Miami and Orlando in film and commercial production. We lag behind our in-state competitors, not because we're a second-tier community, but simply because we don't have one key amenity necessary to attract larger products and generate more local revenue and salaries, rents, and ultimately hotel and sales taxes. Simply put, to take the next step, we need an appropriately sized, technology-based film and production studio, and the market study clearly reflects that. I'll be the first one to brag about how, how well the Film Commission has performed over the last seven years. Tyler showed the numbers, over two hundred and fifty-five million dollars in production spending, but we can clearly do better. The county lacks an appropriately sized studio to accommodate these larger productions. They would hire more local workers, rent local buildings or other properties for on-location shoots, book more hotel room nights, and buy more local goods and services, all of which would generate more local sales taxes and hotel taxes, significantly more than we're receiving now. As Tyler pointed out, we also have several local colleges and universities serving as an education and talent pipeline, and we certainly want our graduates to stay here instead of going to our peer communities. Working with our partners to enhance our statue as a film and digital media community will help us retain our best and brightest. So I believe the study lays the foundation for another extremely worthwhile project that will diversify our cultural landscape and enhance our local economy. So today, I'm going to ask the board to empower staff to develop an RFP for locating a technology-based film production studio in Hillsborough County. The good news is, as Tyler mentioned, we have two very successful public-private partnerships that we can model, a potential P three in our community. And before I make the motion, I just want to point out that today's action does not lock us in into anything. It's simply taking, taking the next step. I also want to point out, and Tyler didn't get into the details today, but the study identified specific locations that would be ideal from geographic and synergistic perspectives, none of which are in my district, in District Two. I just want to point that out. They're either in District One or in District Three. So again, it wouldn't, in all likelihood, would not be in my district if this materializes. So the motion for today is simply to authorize staff to draft an RFP and bring it back to the board for approval, then ultimately issue the RFP to engage private sector interest in a P three for locating a film studio somewhere in Hillsborough County.
Motion by Commissioner Hagan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman. Are there any questions? Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I think this is a very exciting idea, and I thank Commissioner Hagan for all the work that he's clearly been doing and bringing this forward as a next step is a part of a discussion of where the next step might go. And I certainly would support just an RFP and further discussion and consideration of how this fits into our budget and the timing. But I will be, you know, to be clear, I will be looking at how much does this cost the county? And is this the right time for us to be moving ahead in, in spending money in this direction, given our, you know, our current needs for belt tightening and other priorities? So I'd want to look at the, how much it costs, how it fits in with the other money we're already putting. we're already putting into film, the film industry, and how any private partners would be sharing the, in the investment and the, the cost burden with us. It is a shame, as Commissioner Hagan pointed out, that the state is not doing more. And so in order for us to move forward, it would take our precious local dollar, tax dollars. So those are, those are questions I'll be looking at. I am not promising support of whatever, you know, comes forward. I think we'll need to look at the RFP carefully when that comes back and, and make sure what that, that that's moving in a direction we want to go. But I will approve the, the item on the floor today. And, and thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for having the vision and, and doing the work. We do need to think outside the box and diversify our economy. So, so thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'll also support this going forward today, but I also have the same concerns. We're seeing, you know, we're having this put before us now with, I feel, too little information in terms of real hard facts of costs and benefits and what we are currently spending, what this would mean, and all the details of that. So I also, this, for me, doesn't mean a approval in the future. And I think that's wise to be looking again at the RFP because we have, as we've stated so many times before, very many competing interests that also provide jobs and opportunities, including our non-existent or almost non-existent transit, which I would like to see a lot more investment, however that happens. But that will always be my first priority for when we move forward, and I think as an economic driver for this community. So with that, I'll, I'll support this, but I'll be looking very closely at it.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Yeah, well, quickly, I just want to thank Commissioner Smith and Kemp for their comments. Cost and timing are legitimate concerns. I think the reality is that the devil will be in the details. And we just honestly, we don't know what the private sector, what interest there is and what it will bear. And this is an opportunity just to see what's out there and where we can potentially partner. It does not lock us into anything. And I completely agree that, that we're going to need to study the RFP and, and, and cost and timing certainly are legitimate concerns. But I appreciate the support moving forward so we can at least see what opportunities are out there.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize? Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item E1. Senator, for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is item C1, which is to receive a briefing on the impacts, impacts of tropical storm Ada, which, as you know, became Hurricane Ada at a point in time. And Tim Dudley and the emergency management staff are going to appear to this item. While they're getting that item ready and that PowerPoint ready for your presentation, I just wanted to share with you how proud I am of our emergency management staff and frankly, all of our Hillsborough County employees. We are very fortunate that that storm was not any greater than it was, but I have confidence, based on the preparation that occurred, the activities that occurred before, after, and during this storm, during and after the storm, that had it been worse, we would have prepared, been prepared nonetheless. So whether that was getting the emergency order ready in advance, cleaning stormwater ditches in advance, working with our partners, our city partners, especially the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, the school district, I couldn't be more appreciative for everybody's cooperation. With every event, we learn something every time, and it will make us even more prepared next time. But I just wanted to publicly say how appreciative I am of everybody and our staff. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Dudley.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good morning, Commissioners. The Office of Emergency Management Planning Chief Marcus Martin will provide a brief overview of Tropical Storm Ada response, the 28th named storm of the 2020 hurricane season. Upon completion of his report, I present a brief overview of the county COVID testing sites.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marcus Martin. I'm the planning chief here at the Office of Emergency Management for Tropical Storm Ada Activation Day One, which was November 10. At 1:00 PM, Tropical Storm, Tropical Storm Ada was located 340 miles south southwest of Tampa with sustained winds of 60 miles per hour. At that time, the cone did not include Hillsborough County. The storm appeared it would pass west of Tampa Bay with minimal impacts to our area. However, emergency management continued to monitor storm readiness stands due to the erratic nature of prior tracks. For protective actions, we drafted a local state of emergency in order in case the track shifted toward Hillsborough County. At 4:00 PM, Tropical Storm Ada still was around 340 miles south southwest of Hillsborough with sustained winds of 60 miles per hour. However, the track forecast shifted rapidly to the east, plus 200 miles within only a few hours. At that time, Tropical Storm Watch was issued for Florida's West Coast, including Hillsborough County. The compressed timeframe for initiating operations had occurred. Public Works and Utilities undertook multiple detective action tasks. The county also prepared sandbag operations with 18,000 ready at three separate locations within the county. At that time, we developed and implemented strategies for evacuations, transportation, and shelter operations. The local state of emergency was signed and public advisories were issued. Five shelters, three pet-friendly, were identified for the standby and also supported by the Department of Health nursing teams. Logistics mobilized resources to support shelter operations and COVID-19 measures reviewed and implemented at the shelters. EOC also activated staff, not only at the EOC, but also to work remotely. Additionally, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office mobilized personnel, positioned support for chainsaw teams, shelter, and push teams. Hillsborough County Fire Rescue activated their hurricane to stage assets for rapid response. Moving into day two of the activation on November 11, Florida Governors, Florida's governor issued a state of emergency, Executive Order 2278. The state and county COVID-19 testing sites closed for storm preparation. Later on, at 4:00 AM on Wednesday, a hurricane watch was issued. The probability of tropical storm-force winds near and in Hillsborough County increased to 96%. The storm briefly became a Category 1 hurricane, but reverted to tropical storm with sustained winds of 40 miles per hour with wind gusts up to 65 miles per hour within the rain. At that time, tropical storms, storm surge, and tornado warnings were issued for Tampa Bay and Hillsborough County. Florida warn, flood warnings also were issued for the Ala Faya, as well as the Little Man T River. Continue to maintain a watch list and COVID-19 protocols at the emergency operations center throughout the storm event. On day three, November 12 of the activation, the Rapid Response Team and Special Inspection Officers surveyed over 676 square miles for storm damage and impacts. Code enforcement and public works were used for storm debris. Shelters were cleaned and disinfected with eight hours of closure, within eight hours of closure, and then released back to Hillsborough County Public Schools to resume normal operations. State and county COVID-19 testing sites also reopened at this time. Moving on to day four of the activation, we continue to assess and evaluate damage to residential and commercial property, flooded roads, lane closures, and power outage. The area most impacted by the tropical storm was the Rocky Creek Drive area in town and country. Tropical Storm Ada by the numbers. EOC staff with 63 personnel, again, keep in mind COVID-19 protocols throughout the event. Five shelters were open. The county was staffed by 180. The county staffed 180 staff members. The City of Tampa provided 10 staff members. And there were a total of 29 people which occupied our shelters. COVID-19 protocols were used in all shelters. There were a total of 1,104 county employees placed on standby throughout the storm event. There were 274 Hillsborough County Fire Rescue personnel on duty for immediate response with a platoon of 250 additional personnel already for response within 60 minutes of report-to-duty notification. There were 30 residents damaged during the storm, seven suffered major damage, and 27 commercial and other structures incurred storm-related wounds. And there were over six tons of mortar log debris all the way. Tropical Storm Ada Communications. Media Relations. There were 10 press releases distributed throughout the event, seven in-depth targeted media interviews. There was also media briefing held with the county administrator, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Emergency Management, Hillsborough County Public Schools, as well as Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. HCFL Alert and NICSO, there were four alerts sent out to more than 41,000 residents. And additional 537 residents were added as new registrants to HCFL. There were also four NICSO alerts sent out to more than 77,650 subscribers. Social media. There were 85 social posts sent through various platforms, including Twitter, Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, and LinkedIn. For its web support, there were over 282,000 page views of hcflgov.net/stacy. And traffic was up 101% from the previous three days. And lastly, the call center had 836 calls that were received during the activation for shelter, transportation, flooding, down trees, related type calls. That concludes my presentation. I'll open it up if there's any questions at this time.
Thank you. I see no questions at this time. Mr. Dudley, is there anything further you need to bring forth?
I'd like to give a quick overview on the status of the county COVID-19 testing sites. This week will kick off migrant testing at Manatee Village in Ruskin. The rotation of migrant and seasonal farm workers will rotate through the mission until next summer. Testing commences on Wednesday, 18 November. Migrant testing continues to produce respectable numbers for our community at the San Jose Mission. We will continue to utilize this, this state testing resource through peak planning season and concludes, and that will conclude in December, and have begun coordinating with the state to provide rapid testing at both locations and Lee Davis. Also, USF will be temporarily closing testing sites this week. They have been relying heavily on student volunteers to assist with this initiative. The classes are switching to a virtual format beginning the week after Thanksgiving. The spring semester will begin the week of January 11, which is when they would like to resume operations if there's still a need. Also, about three weeks ago, we introduced the rapid testing at Raymond James, and we've seen, we've started to see testing numbers spike and demand for that rapid testing being provided at Raymond James. Also, there are no PPE issues at this time. We have three folks in isolation and 77% of the testing conducted by community health partners. We are, we are exploring testing expansion options throughout the county to support surge testing demands if needed through trusted community pharmacy partnerships established through healthcare services. This concludes my COVID-19 county testing site updates.
I think that was E2, am I correct?
Yes, Commissioner, it seems like we transitioned to E2, yes.
So what we're going to do now, thank you, Mr. Dudley. Hold on before we do that. We're going to receive C1. Is there any questions on C1? Have a motion to accept C1?
Some of.
Motion by Commissioner Overman. Second?
Merman.
Second.
Commissioner.
To receive item C1. Senator, for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Are there any questions on the E2, which is the emergency management operation related to COVID-19 and local state of emergency?
Actually, I would like to have a question, please.
With Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. Mr. Dudley, your report included what, what we have been doing on our side, but I think it, do we have a report that does describe where we are as far as positivity rates included in your report? Because last I checked, we're looking at 8.2% positivity rate over the last 14 days. Yesterday, it appeared as though we had, or the 14th, I'm sorry, 431 new cases with a fatality rate of 1.63%. You know, if, if we do have an emergency, there is still an emergency. If we had 8.2% of the population of Hillsborough County become exposed, that would equate to 22,000, I'm sorry, 115,000 people that were actually positive for COVID. And given the fatality rate, although ours is lower than the rest of the state because we absolutely have some of the best medical teams in our county, that would equate to 22,820 people. Now, I don't know about you guys, but 22,000 people at risk would be a problem. So I, and would be considered an emergency. We would, we were risk protecting more than 20, 22,000 people that were at risk of flooding and other things during this hurricane potential storm. So I, I just want to urge people to continue doing what they're doing in terms of being safe, continue following the recommendation and the mandate in terms of wearing masks, social distancing, and washing your hands. For us to be able to continue opening up businesses and operating well, we must be diligent until we have a vaccine. So thank you. But I, I don't, I didn't see that that was part of Mr. Dudley's report, so I'll, I'll stop there.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Commissioner Merman and Commissioner Miller. Yes, we do have Dr. Holt, who is here also to give the numbers that you're referring to, as well as Kevin Wagner, to go through our dashboard.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this part of C1 or E2?
Item E2, yes, sir.
Pardon?
Item E2, yes, sir.
Moving to E2 then?
Yes. Let's move on to E2 officially.
Dr. Holt, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I was a little confused whether I should bring this up now or after we hear more, but I have had recent concerns and several people contacting me because they're very confused at this point about how they get tested. And, and if we could maybe reiterate, I don't know if that's coming or what, availability, phone numbers, all of that. I know I looked on our website, and you can call a phone number, and I did get an answer from a live operator within one minute, but the telephone number was kind of buried and not easy to find. And so I'm just, you know, moving forward, do we have any testing that we're sponsoring? And, and maybe we could have this addressed a little at this point.
I mean, the numbers been out there since March. I don't know what's happened, Commissioner, I'm a Commissioner. Ms. Wise? Ms. Wise, or you want to have Mr. Dudley address that?
We can do that, but I can also mention that we do have the website being updated all the time. And then we also have some media that is going to be reiterating the safety measures. We know the holidays are approaching. We're going to have a campaign going out there for everybody to be safe during the holidays, minimize their groups, their large groups, and remaining to do the things that we know are important. Wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands frequently. And we're going to reiterate that message throughout the holiday season. So we'll be sure to make sure that those messages are getting out, make sure that that number is prevalent, and that people can get tested and sign up for that rapid testing especially.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we do more prominence because this grows bigger and bigger. People are expecting that there's a public, more of a public testing. And I think a lot of it has now privatized. And I just think there's some confusion about that.
Okay, let's move to E2?
Yes, and we can turn it over to Dr. Holt now.
Dr. Holt, good morning, you recognize?
Good morning, Chairman Miller and Commissioners. This is Dr. Doug Holt, Florida Department of Health. I will do the presentation of my overview. And then Mr. Wagner will walk through the dashboard for details and then certainly be available for questions. If I could ask for the first slide. Recall, this is the slide that I kind of use. It's a seven-day cases per 100,000 population average. It's the, it's a rate that we've been following. And so, as you can see, we have, three weeks ago, when I presented this, we were closer to the moderate, the third, the second, I'm sorry, line, which is the, what we would have called the yellow zone that we were trying to get to. So we were running around 89, 90 cases on a seven-day average for per 100,000. We are now at 140, which translates into 300 cases a day. So just again, as a sort of a reference point, three weeks ago, we were in the lower part of what I would have called the orange zone. And we had aspirations and hopes of maybe getting into the yellow zone. We have now shown a significant upward trend that we are now in the upper portion of the orange zone and approaching the red zone. This is being seen across the country and Florida. So we, I think we're all experiencing the same surge. The positivity, as noted by the Commissioners previously, it was 5.8. The last seven days, it's now 8.3. Our hospitals remain very busy, but are not stressed. I would mention that our dashboard does underrepresent the actual numbers because of our data source that gives us more direct access through the Tampa General Consortium. So the hospital census previously had been about 150 a day. It's now up to 230. They're now admitting about 30 a day instead of 20, as we were looking at three weeks ago. Fortunately, the hospitals have become very efficient in their medical management and quality outcomes. So they're able to discharge sort of a like amount. But those that are remaining are extraordinarily sick, either from their actual COVID itself or the damage that's been done. And there are several that are waiting for lung transplant consideration. The percent occupancy on our dashboards, again, a little underreflected, but the general population beds are about 70% and the ICU is at 85%. That's pretty much a manageable level for them at this point. Our deaths have increased by approximately over 100. We're now at 862. Delving into the data, the age range that are showing the most increase are in our, again, not pretty much the same pattern, the 25 to 34, but also seeing 35, 44, 45 to 54. So the 35 to 55. But also very concerning, we are seeing increases across all age groups, not surprising, including those above 65. The transmission patterns, of course, household remained a significant source of exposure that's being reported. Some large gatherings, particularly in the public sector, which is where the mask mandates have the greatest effect. But just again, I think reemphasizing, which has been done with Ms. Wise talked about the holidays, we must be more cautious or more thoughtful around the times when we're doing our small, private, social gatherings. And again, it may not feel natural to wear masks or to keep some distance in that setting. That is the advice and that's strongly recommended. The impact on some of the cases itself indirectly are also impacting us through the quarantining or exclusion of some critical workers, both healthcare workers and our school staff. So it's having an effect beyond just sickness and illness that we are concerned about. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Wagner to go through the dashboard.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Good morning, Commissioners, Kevin Wagner, Business Analyst, Healthcare Services Department. As Dr. Holt indicated, the public dashboard is available. The concept for the public information areas in the pink or salmon color are areas of concern or trends of concern. Areas of green are moving in the direction preferred. To date with the last update, we confirmed cases are 52,907, excuse me, with an estimated recovered of 44,418. On row two, again, as Dr. Holt indicated, our seven-day positive change has gone up slightly by 3%. And our 14-day change of 2% cases per day has gone up nearly 27%. Again, roughly 300 cases per day in the community are confirmed. Our testing average is still well below our target of a two-week average of 47,000. Roughly, our testing has increased, but is still averaging only 24,811 cases reported, testing reported into FDOH. And our 14-day positivity, as indicated by the Commission, is at 8.28%. The last row on this one regarding the hospitalization data again comes from the TGH Data Exchange and does have a lag. While it is green and would continue to be green, as Dr. Holt indicated, the capacity is increasing or decreasing respectfully. Our cases by summary on the bottom are the last four months of the cases by day. If we look on the far left of August 20, was near our high peak, July and August, we do see decrease through August and September and October. And then the trend is going upward again in October and November, as indicated by Dr. Holt. Our cases per day on a seven-day count is again 302. On a 14-day count, 297. So you do see that line from a high point dip down to slightly going upward or trending upward again on a cases-by-day average for the community. Speaking with the hospitalization data on the bottom row, again, on the dashboard, it was 152. There is a data delay that we're honest and open about. Currently, it's 200 plus, as Dr. Holt indicated. As the data comes in, this will be moved forward accordingly. But again, from a hospitalization census, that is going up as well. Our testing summary, which was discussed earlier, top row, far right-hand side, the reporting testing on a per-week average. If you look at the week of October 18th, is around 22,500. And it's slightly increased in these three, four weeks to 24,800, nearly 25,000. So the testing has gone up in a way that we're looking for a positive standpoint, but well short of the weekly goal. Regarding testing, again, we do see the trend of testing of all time of a positivity rate in July around 17, nearly 18%, a decrease in August, September. And now we are trending upward to 8.5% of positivity rate based upon the test on a 14-day average and/or on a seven-day average. The last page of the dashboard, the top are the daily cases by age group, specific cases. Nothing's moved, so there is variability as the cases are reported. The bottom is the seven-day case per 100,000 by specific age groups. Again, these age groups are 0 to 4, 5 to 13, 14 to 17, and 18 to 24. Again, the school age groups is what's indicated here. We have seen, again, the same trend, little higher in September, decrease in October. And if you look from the right of October 25th through November 8th, again, this is a week, looking at weeks, those trends are increasing for all four of those age groups. The 18 to 24 and 14 to 17 have the highest increases indicated there. And I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, and thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Olman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a real quick question. Dr. Holt, could you give us some idea or what things we should consider? You know, we have many, many students coming home for Thanksgiving. And the highest percentage positive is in the ages, you know, in the 20 to 30 range or in our college ages. Do you have any recommendations for parents, grandparents, and college students as they potentially return home for the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays?
Yes, Commissioner. In general, the advice for each family should be discussed. The risk for those that are at home. Appropriate measures would include consideration of testing of students that are leaving before they come. And on arrival, again, to continue to keep their distance, if you will, wearing masks. And other social gatherings such as the, beyond outside of the home, the nuclear family, if you will, really discourage inviting those that are outside of the family itself to gather. So to keep it in the family, if you will, and not the virus, but the contacts to each other. And also ideally keep gatherings less than 10 in an indoor setting. And I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize? Commissioner White, Mr. White?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you recognize, go ahead.
Okay, some questions for Dr. Holt. One is, Dr. Holt, what does the news on the vaccine mean for, you know, not only the nation and the state, but for Hillsborough County in your mind in the upcoming, you know, months, say, three months, six months to a year? You know, where do you think the vaccine is going to take us in terms of these numbers? Also, I'd like to ask, you know, in the absence of the vaccine being a factor, at what point do we start to possibly reach herd immunity across the nation? And again, in the state and in our county? Public opinion polling, at least some that I've looked at, has seemed to indicate that people just feel that COVID is now regarded as something that we just need to learn to live with. It's here. People certainly are not interested in any further shutdowns. You've seen the sort of discourse that the mask issue has caused. Certainly, Dr. Holt, as you've mentioned, the issue seems to be nationwide. Certainly, as you look across the nation, you know, various states or states have differing regulations as it relates to masks and business activity and everything else. But my main question is, again, just what your thoughts are on the vaccine? And at what point we start to talk about herd immunity?
Yes, sir, I would certainly do my best. We'll begin with the vaccine. You know, I think this is a very remarkable and exciting scientific achievement, just to get us to the point where we may have some vaccines that are coming into our communities, you know, again, perhaps by the end of the year. So in the next month or so, that's a hopeful and ideal, if you will, because they still have to go through some proving from the federal level and then they have to start sending it out. But we're ready to begin to receive vaccine as soon as possible. How much we get in that first month or first allocation is unknown at this time. We do know we are going to work to distribute it with our hospitals predominantly initially for our healthcare workers. And that has a lot to do with the, this is not a routine vaccine that you can get typically at your own doctor's clinic. The way it's formulated, it requires super cold freezing storage and has to be used fairly quickly when they get it out. So the hospitals are equipped, they have the staff, they have everything they need and we need for them to get the vaccine into people as soon as possible. And then we're working to, the federal government's got a plan to get us into the long-term care. And those are probably the two priorities. And I don't think we'll have much more vaccine beyond those two populations. It requires two doses. So we won't really see that group begin to be immunized, if you will, until the early spring, late February into March on an ideal factor. Now, if additional vaccines do become available, that will accelerate the supply. And if it's easier to administer, we'll get a wider. So that's really, it's kind of where we think we will be, I think, realistically over the next couple of months. Hurt immunity has gotten a lot of speculation. It's a prediction, it's based on similar, it's kind of the opposite or the similar to what we did for modeling and trying to figure out what would happen if people did this or that. So the ideas are based on a lot of assumptions. The assumptions that the immunity that you get naturally from an infection or maybe one of the common cold viruses help produce some partial immunity. And then the vaccine, the percentages that you would have to achieve, at least from our, what we have historically looked at for herd immunity, is 60 to 70% of the population being protected, having either through being infected or being vaccinated. It's really only ever been achieved by vaccination. Natural immunity hasn't achieved it outside of very small localizations of things. So it's a hope, as from a strategy standpoint, it's hopeful. I don't think it is an ideal one that you would intentionally pursue to get there. But I do understand the science is suggestive that there may be some hope that that combination will give us more people that are protected from being infected again. And if they are protected from being infected, then they will protect by not infecting others. So I always say, you know, hope is not a strategy, but it is something that we live with and hope for. with and hope for. So let me stop there.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I have a question about contact tracing, because, again, I've been with everyone, with our rates going up and what the situation we have now. I had several people contact me to say that they had tested positive but had never had any tracing or calls or anything. And so my question is this, I'm guessing that just because our numbers have always been high, we've never gone below five percent, we've always had big numbers, and they're going up now. Are we actually doing contact tracing? How does that work? Would, should a person expect if they get a positive test that they actually would be contacted, or is that just too much because of the numbers we have?
No, they should be expected to be contacted, and again, the numbers impact how long it takes to get there, to get a response, and how they're contacted. And so this does, you know, we're not quite back into our peaks of July, but when you get cases, when you're seeing more than certainly a hundred and probably even fifty is, a hundred and fifty cases a day, the ability to reach people quickly and interview them and get the information you need to make a difference, if you will, is, you know, you're overwhelmed. And that's, I think we've talked about that in the past, we're hoping to get us down into that, less than a hundred or so cases where contact tracing can be real-time and impactful. They are introducing technologies, we're going to have an app that's going to be launched here, I've been told, any day, where people will be notified directly of a result, not a positive or negative, and be encouraged to check it. And with that, that automatically, if you're positive, would begin the preliminary processes of collecting the information needed to do contact tracing. This is not a substitute for a full interview, which takes generally thirty minutes to an hour to get a full interview of someone who's tested positive to know all the things we need to know about where they've been and who they've been around. So, bottom line, contact tracing is not effective as designed at the level of the numbers of cases we're seeing, but that doesn't stop us from trying to reach everyone as quickly as we can. And I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. An app, it seems like that would be a good helper in this case, because just we're still dealing with these numbers. Hopefully, that vaccine will prove to be, you know, a good, give us some relief from this ever-growing virus. But in the meantime, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Holt and Mr. Wagner, thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is Item G2, which is to receive the report from management and budget regarding the update on COVID-19 programs and activities. Tom Fessler will present that item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wanted to go over our staff report review today, the COVID staff report. This is a report that comes to you at every meeting, so I won't spend a tremendous amount of time on it. One of the things I will say upfront is we are, you know, getting to the point now where we're kind of in wrap-up mode on a lot of our programs. So I just want to make, you know, go over some of the numbers again very quickly, and then there's a short video, two-and-a-half-minute video that I like to play at the end. As far as our economic recovery programs, we started developing those programs back in May. We developed them from May through about June. We launched the programs in July, and we closed out the application process in about mid-October. With our small business program, we are projecting that we're going to get about ninety-four million dollars out into the community to over fifty-five-hundred small businesses. To date, forty-nine-hundred payments have been made, so we are closing in on getting all those payments out, hopefully within the next week or so. With the program, you can see we have a workforce training program there, that's the program that we have with Career Source Tampa Bay. Career Source will be coming to make a presentation at your next board meeting, they were scheduled to make a presentation on Wednesday, and then because of the tropical storm, we have postponed that to the next meeting. As far as our housing and utility program, that is a program that makes payments to individuals into households for either mortgages or rent, also pays for some utilities. That program, at this point, we're projecting we'll get about thirty-eight million dollars out into the community to over fifty-two-hundred households. To date, forty-eight-hundred payments have been made, so we are, again, closing in on getting the final payments out on that, and hopefully within the next week or so, that program will be closed out. As far as our food supply program, we've got over seven million dollars committed to several organizations that we're working with, Feeding Tampa Bay, East Tampa Business and Civic Association, United Food Bank of Plant City, and Metropolitan Ministries. They've been tremendous partners, and we've gotten a lot of food out into the community. Also, under our life safety programs, we have contracts with each of the cities. We are going to be distributing about thirty-nine million dollars to the cities so that they can meet their own needs, to make sure that they've got safety measures in place when they are continuing their operations. We've got a community venues program where we provided funding to Tampa Sports Authority that is assisting with Raven James Stadium, Steinbrenner Field, Amalie Arena, and also other venues out in the community that are frequented by the public. We have our nonprofit safety program, Safety Net Program, about fourteen million dollars has been committed to that, most of those payments, I believe, have been made at this point. We've got about twenty-four million dollars that we've committed to our own facilities, and that includes funding that's been provided to each of the constitutional officers. But those dollars are for our teleworking program, they're for improvements to our facilities, they're for PPE and different things that we're doing to try to protect both our employees and the public. We've got our tourism, we have a tourism program, we've committed two million dollars to tourism. We have public health, just general public health type expenditures that we're going to be making or programs that we have. We've, as you're aware, are making a contribution to Tampa General Hospital for four-and-a-half million dollars to assist with them in opening a new fifty-nine-bed COVID unit at Tampa General Hospital. Also included in the public health area, the seven million dollars is, we've got the TGH, but we also have contact tracing, some funding we've provided to provide for housing the homeless population, so we can assist with social distancing in that area, and then also with PPE. The most significant thing I wanted to point out today in today's report is, we've been coming to you every week, and it's been a little bit embarrassing because the expenditures haven't been going up, and they've been increasing very slowly. This is the first time you've seen this graph. So this is where you can see all of the hard work that's starting to pay dividends on us being highly successful in getting those dollars out into the community and providing benefits. So at our last board meeting, the number I believe I reported to you was we had about thirty-four million dollars in expenditures, as we're coming into basically mid-October, and we have two-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars to spend by the end of the year. Well, since then, as of November fourth, those expenditures, those programs have really started to kick into gear, and we're really getting the dollars out the door, up to over a hundred and forty million dollars of expenditures. And as we sit here today, I believe we are now in excess of a hundred and seventy million, and by the time we meet again at your next meeting in December, I would expect that we would have expenditures of over two-hundred million. So we are finally starting to see the benefits of all the hard work that's going into, you know, benefit the community. And with that, I would have, I'm going to have James Brewer play a very short video for you, it's about two-and-a-half minutes long, related to our three programs.
... and sautees with a smile.
Oh, you got a good one there.
And believe it or not, Gaston Meredith had that same mentality when a global pandemic first shut down his catering company at the beginning of 2020.
I'm one of those calm people to where I learned that if you start to worry too much about your problems, that you can't focus on what you need to do to solve them.
But then, the days got longer.
My team was put on hold, we were spending money not making money.
Like Gaston, many Hillsborough County business owners in the event industry were completely blindsided and had no idea just how much it would hurt.
Every event we had, and we had a lot scheduled, just canceled, 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 canceled.
I almost felt a numbness, it's kind of holding your breath and just trying not to feel too much.
They make a living by bringing people together, and we were all told to stay apart.
Nobody was able to do any type of work, you know, people weren't doing headshots, people weren't seeing one another, they weren't having those personal connections.
So the business model shifted. To make ends meet, they offered online fitness classes, sold food to go, and hosted socially-distanced celebrations. They were grateful for the community's support, but still needed the extra income. That's when they all found Hillsborough County's R3 Economic Recovery Financial Assistance for Businesses program.
I think the biggest thing was a sense of support, that we weren't out here on our own, that someone cared enough to put this program together and make it obtainable to us.
The program helped soften the economic injury the pandemic has inflicted on the small business community. The R3 money helped pay bills, purchase new equipment, and allowed them to operate with enhanced safety measures.
Everybody needed their own mat, everybody needed their own apparatus.
I've learned our community is unbelievable, both Hillsborough County, thank you so much, we really appreciate your help and you guys coming here and supporting small businesses like ours. Thank you to how strong of a community that we did build, that they stuck with us.
These business owners say the county assistance has them looking forward to the future.
Hillsborough County is a family, and it's like a family member came to say, hey, you know, you need some help, and I'm going to help you, I'm there for you.
And Commissioners, that's my report for the day, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Mr. Fessler, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Sorry, I don't, it doesn't show that my hand is up, and I didn't have it up.
I see it up, but, okay. All right, let me say this before we make a motion to receive the report. When we first started, this pandemic first hit, and we started getting these dollars in from the federal government, our staff started putting together programs like overnight. It was, they would come up with an idea on Tuesday, and then Wednesday morning they were ready to implement it. I don't know if they worked all night or what they did, but they put together programs to meet the needs of people in this county, I mean, so fast, it was astronomical. And I just want to thank the staff for what they did to help the people of this county. It was overwhelming, what you did, the pandemic overwhelmed all of us, and it really, really was hurting businesses, but you came, and people, but you came together and put your thoughts and minds together and just did an outstanding job. And I just want to personally thank you for all that you did for the people of this county. I don't know how you did it, I don't know how you came up with these programs overnight, I think you might have worked late at night and maybe built up some time to take off when this pandemic does give us some relief, Dr. Fauci said sometime in July twenty-twenty-one, but I just personally want to thank you for that. Can we have a motion to receive Item G2?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman to approve Item G2. See to further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Merman? Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Merman, and thank you for those kind words, it is an honor to serve this community. If we could go back to Item E2, I inadvertently left off the county attorney and the emergency order.
Yes.
Yes, good morning, Chair Miller and Board members, Christine Beck, County Attorney. Very briefly, just an informational item to let you know that the governor did extend the state of Florida's emergency order for an additional sixty days. That would make it effective through approximately January third, and of course, that's related to COVID. And at this time, Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to consider an extension of our local state of emergency, which would be effective this Thursday, November nineteenth, for an additional seven days.
There's your motion, motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman to extend our local state of emergency. See to further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is Item B2, county attorney's item regarding testing at nursing homes and other facilities.
Yes, I believe Paul Johnston is on the line to cover this. Paul?
Good morning, Commissioners, Paul Johnston, County Attorney's Office. Board directed us to draft a resolution recommending the routine testing at nursing homes and related facilities. We have worked with county staff and the medical professionals, and we presented this resolution for your review today, we recommended the passage of this resolution as it's presented.
Thank you, everyone, and the county staff for bringing this forward. I brought this item to reaffirm our commitment to the health and safety of our most vulnerable patient populations who reside in our nursing homes, assisted living facilities, intermediate care facilities, group homes, and homes for persons with disabilities. This resolution is a recommendation and not a mandate. At our last meeting, Dr. Dean Peterson highlighted that people who live in congregate living facilities or congregate facilities are at high risk and may not have the ability to take precautions on their own without help. Many may not be able to even put their own masks on or wash their hands or require and do require the care that doesn't permit social distancing. So this items comes before us as we see our weekly COVID numbers rise among nursing home staff more than quadrupling in twenty surge states. Without routine testing of staff, the very caregivers tasked with treating our vulnerable residents may unwittingly be the easiest vector for the viral transmission. Should there be questions from the dais, I would note that in addition to Dr. Holt and Ms. Beck, we have Ms. Chu and Dr. Jeffrey Klausner, both subject matters on the expert on the web call in the event that there are questions regarding the health recommendation. This resolution will affirm our commitment to protecting our most vulnerable, and I hope you can support the passage. So I move that, although they will have opened it for discussion, but I move that to adopt the resolution which recommends the routine testing of staff at nursing homes, assisted living facilities, intermediate care facilities, group homes, and homes for persons with disabilities to protect vulnerable patients and residents from the threat of COVID-19.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Overman, for bringing this forward in this way. You know, people might wonder, well, what is a recommendation if, you know, if it's, if we're not sending sheriffs in to enforce it? But a recommendation is very helpful for these homes, given especially how contentious discussions can be about mask-wearing and testing and some of these things. It gives, our recommendation gives those homes that want to comply some support and enables them to point to our authority and say, well, this is, you know, legally recommended, and we need to adhere to this because it comes from the county government. So I certainly support that. county government. So I certainly support this, and I think it is well worth sending this recommendation to these facilities. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman to approve item B2. Seeing to further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is a special appearance by the University of South Florida Alumni Association. We have Randy Norris, Raymond Gross, and Bill McCosland here to present this item.
Good morning. You recognize?
Thank you, Chairman. This is Randy Norris, Chairman of the University of South Florida Alumni Association, and I'd like, on behalf of the University of South Florida Alumni Association, to present this resolution. Whereas Leslie J. Miller Jr. was born, raised, and attended school in Tampa, Florida; whereas Leslie J. Miller Jr. furthered his education at Bethune-Cookman College, and then honorably served four years in the United States Air Force; in addition, he returned to Tampa and the University of South Florida, where he earned a bachelor's degree in political science in 1978. In 2005, he received an honorary doctorate degree from Florida A&amp;M University. And whereas Les, as he became known, began his long record of community service in 1974 with a membership that still exists in the Prince Hall Free and Accepted Basins, constantly expanding that service commitment with a life membership in the Tampa Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity and multiple other organizations. And whereas Les went to Tallahassee in 1992 as an elected member of the Florida House of Representatives, and during his third term, he was chosen as the minority leader. And he was elected in 2000 and served for six years in the Florida Senate, where he also became minority leader. And whereas Les returned to public office in 2010 by being elected to Hillsborough County Commission and represented the commission on a multitude of boards, and whereas after serving more than 40 years of service to his community, city, county, and country, Les Miller will retire while always recognizing his duty to serve all groups and citizens. And whereas he retires with these recognition awards, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Interfaith Memorial Service, and Robert W. Saunders Service Awards, both for efforts to promote civil rights, the Florida League of Cities Legislative Award, the Florida Housing Coalition Legislative Award, and these citations brought on by efforts on behalf of Education, Florida Education Association Presidents Award, the Early Learning Coalition Legislative Excellence Award, and the University of South Florida President Citizens Award. And whereas University of South Florida graduate Leslie J. Miller Jr. has always been an example for the university, students, teachers, officers, and other graduates, an example that began when he was a student, serving as president of both the Student Government Association and Black Student Union, and as student representative on the Florida Board of Regents. And in his past postgraduate years, the university utilized his skills and loyalty by employing him as a dean of students and associate vice president for students. Les is one of the few graduates to serve as both a student body president and later as president of the University of South Florida Alumni Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the University of South Florida Alumni Association recognizes the impact provided by Leslie J. Miller Jr. and commends him for more than 40 years in unwavering service to everyone affiliated with the university and the University of South Florida Alumni Association, adopted 16th day of November 2020 by Randy L. Norris, Chair, USF Alumni Association Board of Directors. Thank you.
I'm gonna let you take over.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you very, very much for that. That was impressive. That was amazingly impressive, and I want to give Commissioner Miller an opportunity to take a deep breath, because I'm sure that was heartfelt and heart-rendering, actually. So thank you so much.
To my fellow alumni, University of South Florida, you caught me by surprise on that one. I didn't know why you were on the agenda. I had no idea what this was about. You totally caught me by surprise, and I want to thank you all for doing that. University of South Florida has a special place in my heart because when I left the Air Force and came back, you know, you all took a chance on me and allowed me to come back on a special assignment to the university after I left the Air Force. And I must tell you the truth. When I got back to University of South Florida and found out how difficult it was, and the classroom almost left and went back in the Air Force. But there was a gentleman there that taught school by the name of Dr. Arthur Levy, told me no way I was going back in the Air Force. I was going to finish my career at the University of South Florida. I'm glad he talked me into it. You all gave me a chance to further my education there, and I never wavered my support for the university. I never will. Every opportunity I had a chance to do something for the university, I've done that, and I will continue to do that because you gave me that opportunity. And as an alumnus, I have been supportive. My wife and I have created a scholarship at the University of South Florida for undeserving students there. We'll continue to do that. And I just want to say thank you so very much for this. You really got to me this morning by surprise. But again, thank you so very much, and to the university, and go Bulls. Thank you, sir. I think Commissioner Smith wants to say something. Commissioner Smith, I see your hand raised.
Sorry, that was left over. I'll speak later.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you so very much. I'll be seeing you soon. Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you, and I'm glad you were surprised. Commissioners, how about we do item G1 before we go on to the farewell ceremony, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. Item G1 is a report. We're calling it Together Hillsborough. It's a staff report on COVID-19 and related housing strategies. Three commissioners, at least, of you have inquired about this topic and have made motions for us to bring back reports relating to evictions and housing solutions for people who have been impacted by COVID-19, and ideas that we can have to address this matter, both in the short term and in the long term. So I would like to present Carl Harness, Cheryl Howell, and Greg Horredell, who will give a presentation to you and outline a strategy. This is an effort that has been multi-departmental in its efforts and will continue to be so. So I want to thank everybody for working very closely together on this endeavor.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carl Harness. I'm the Chief Human Services Administrator for Hillsborough County, and as Bonnie has said, we're pleased to bring you the staff report this morning on COVID-19 related to housing strategies, which from this point forward will be known as Together Hillsborough. And as she has also said, I will be sharing this presentation with my colleagues, Ms. Cheryl Howell from our affordable housing director, and Mr. Gregory Horredell, our deputy county administrator. And Mr. Brewer will be doing the slides for us. So thank you, sir. The purpose of this report is, Ms. Wise has said, is to address three separate referrals staff received from Commissioner Kemp, Overman, and White, requesting that we explore opportunities to accommodate the impacts anticipated from future evictions resulting from the pandemic, developing a comprehensive housing strategy to address those issues Hillsborough County residents are facing and will face in the future due to the effects of the pandemic, and to engage and to also engage the United Way Suncoast Organization to implement an enhanced plan to distribute available funds to our community partners. Our goal here is to consolidate those three referrals into one referral item. Although this report, although the report focuses on evictions and foreclosures, we're all aware that the holistic perspective centers around back-to-family self-sufficiency. Little did we know when we started on this journey that this was going to be a long-term event. Fortunately, through the leadership of our Board of County Commissioners, our organization was able to pivot and reprioritize our operations and service deliveries to sustain the community within this pandemic environment. As long as we are in this pandemic environment, we will find ourselves in a mode of crisis, and this crisis is here and it's now. COVID-19 has been unlike anything that any of us have experienced in our lifetime. It's impacted every aspect of our lives, and it's kind of like, you know, those old horror movies we used to see, but, you know, where you have this one particular entity that just impacts everything that you do. And basically, right now, we're living our real-life horror movie in real time. However, our overarching goal at this point is to maintain intact families, and providing safe and stable housing is the foundation to getting that done. What have we done to date? There have been many successes resulting from the Board of County Commissioners initiatives. We have made many strides developing programs within our community. And as Tom Fessler had said early in his report, when you look at all funds, all total funds that we've invested, I think there will probably add up somewhere to the area of about $293 million that we've invested in our community during this COVID event. But what have we done? Where have we made our strides? Well, we've assisted in suspension of utility disconnects. We've assisted with our Small Business Relief Program. We had our Safety Net. We implemented our Safety Net Nonprofit and Child Care Facility Support Program. We've expanded our food distribution programs. We've had some Career Source Assistant Programs. And the one program that everybody's kind of focused on and we've been widely familiar with is our Rapid Response and Recovery Program, which is known as our R3 Program. And through these programs, we have assisted thousands of families, individuals, and business entities. And Mr. Brewer, if you mind going to the next slide. And just as an example, this slide kind of shows you, it displays the distribution of citizens that we have served through the county's R3 Program. And as you can see, that, you know, every area of our county has basically been impacted by the pandemic and has been served by our R3 Programs in addition to our other programs. So the timeline that we've been working on so far, and the utilization of the CARES fundings and the limited resources that we've had with those CARE fundings, did not permit us an opportunity for the team to implement its landlord support program. However, we are anticipating this to be our next critical area of focus, which will filter into some of the things that Cheryl and Greg will talk to you about as it relates to foreclosure and evictions. With all that's been done to date, we truly realize that it's not enough, and we still have many challenges ahead of us. Mr. Brewer, could you hit that next slide for me, please, sir? Thank you. This COVID-19 situation presents a complex scenario for many families, having to make daily life-sustaining choices. And as it relates to dealing with this pandemic and moving forward, you know, our primary goal is to position the county, to position us to be able to plan, to be able to operate and respond more in a preventative mode versus being reactionary. As we move forward, we will work to develop new programs and initiatives with a focus on implementing processes that will enable our customers to easily maneuver through the programs and the processes we develop. And as stated before, this is a long-term event, so as we develop and implement our strategies, we will be looking to address things from a short term, from an intermediate, and from a long-term perspective, as we prioritize our areas of concern that we will be focusing on moving forward. Let's keep it on that slide for right now. So as we go into the next phase of this presentation, as we narrow the focus a little more, narrow the discussion a little more into the factors of eviction and foreclosures, do be reminded that all of these things are integrated, all of these challenges are integrated, you know, job availability, basic family needs and basic family necessities and needs, and having to balance those, affordable housing, and being able to afford utility costs, and just the lack of income that most folks are experiencing from job loss, and how that's impacting their spending choices, having the way, the balance between, you know, putting food on the table, having childcare, being able to afford my rent, my mortgage, and having, you know, the ability to provide available health care to our families. So that kind of serves as an introduction to this presentation. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Cheryl Howell, our Affordable Housing Director.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Director. And I just want to share with you, if you can, James, flip over to the next slide, please. I just want to share with you a little bit of data on where we were and where we are now, and how we're projecting out some of the needs. And so this first slide right here is for homeownership. So we want to demonstrate where foreclosures have gone over the past 14 years. Now, we're covering the years from 2006 until 2020. If you look, 2009 and 2010, that is the highest points of foreclosure, and that was during our housing crisis period. Now, since 2012, the foreclosure rate has dropped significantly each year until 2018, where it kind of just leveled off here. So in 2018 and 2019, it leveled off. Now, in 2020, it's significantly lower than it was. We only have 698 foreclosures for this year. But that's primarily due to the moratoriums that have been put in place. Well, that is our assumption at this particular time. Now, our moratoriums that were put in place were put in place by HUD and by CDC to really limit the number of families that were being displaced by COVID-related activities. Could you go to the next slide, please, James? So now, let's talk about the renters for just a second, and we want to look at the historical eviction data. And that is typically, even though people who go through foreclosure also can be evicted, typically renters will typically fall under this set of data. Now, evictions have remained relatively constant throughout the years, and we're looking at that same time period between 2006 and 2020. Now, in pre-COVID, one of the things that you'll see for the first quarter is that those numbers have remained primarily constant over the years, and the first quarter of 2020 was consistent with the years before 2018, 2019. So let's just take a closer look. So in 2018, in the first quarter, there were 2,579 evictions. For 2019, there was 2,531 evictions for that first quarter, and in 2020, it was 2,643. But for the remainder of that year, it's only been 3,000 additional evictions, and that's primarily due to the moratoriums. If you'll go to the next slide, please, James. Now, let's talk a little bit about what the moratoriums did for families that were facing displacement. First of all, they were limited time for limited circumstances for protection. So the FHA and the CDC both issued moratoriums. The homeowners could not be foreclosed upon or evicted until 12/31/2020. And so we are not seeing the type of foreclosures that we'll probably see until January or February. The FHA action does not cover legally vacant or abandoned properties. So if somebody is squatting on a property, then they can still be evicted. Now, if a homeowner sells their property, any deferred mortgage payments has to be repaid. So that's a part of it as well. Now, there are certain restrictions on residential evictions outside of non-payment, and so if you breach your lease in other ways, they can And so if you breach your lease in other ways, they can still evict you. And for instance, residential evictions for criminal acts, drug use, vandalism can still proceed. Now, the CDC moratorium came into play September 20th through the end of the year. But neither moratorium covers utility delinquencies. And for the most part with utilities, whether it's lights or water, if you have your electricity or your water turned off, then typically you've breached your lease contract. If you'll move on to the next slide, please, James. So let's just talk about the past versus the future for just a minute. Now, I'm giving you a little bit of information here on the baseline for evictions and for foreclosures. And it's given us some indicators of, first of all, we know the demographics, but what the needs could be. And when we start to look at our utilities, it'll further demonstrate some of those needs in particular areas. Now, we've seen activity in the last few months that certainly has, we want to say, been influenced by the moratorium. So when we look at our data, we have some false assumptions here. Now, just as the county has developed R3 programs to respond to COVID-19, we're looking at how we can pivot from those R3 programs into more long-term programs to help our families during this sustained pandemic. The next slide, please, James. So let's look at the eviction notices that's been filed. And so when I look at this particular chart right here, first and foremost, I want to say that in District 3, the eviction notices were three times as high as it was in District 4 and about twice as high as they are in District 1 and 2. And there's some telltale reasons for that. One, first of all, is more renters in that area. Second of all, that area has a tremendous amount of very low-income people. And a lot of times, they don't know what their rights are as tenants. So many of them could have undergone eviction processes without knowing that they could rebut. If you'll go on to the next slide, please, James. And now I want to talk about the water utility delinquencies for a minute. Now, this is a heat map that displays the delinquencies of water accounts for each district. Now, District 4 has 6,126 accounts that's delinquent. Now, if you'll notice in the previous slide, it had the least amount of evictions. That's because they have a higher homeowner rate down in that district than they do. And District 4 has a higher homeownership rate than it does in District 3. Now, District 4 has 6,126 accounts that's delinquent. That's more than any other district. District 1 and 2, they follow respectively at about a 50% discount. So about 50% less than that 6,100 is, I want to say, maybe about 4,000. And they start respectively decreasing from there. Now, the maps of the eviction and the delinquent accounts are indicators to help us gauge what areas are impacted the greatest and the type of assistance that would be most helpful based on the demographics of the area and based on the prevailing housing types in that area. If you'll move on to the next slide, please. So let's just talk about our primary goals for a minute and what we are primarily here to do. First and foremost, we want to prioritize the residents vulnerable to displacement. Because we understand that when residents are displaced, there's a whole host of issues that accompany that. The second thing that we're looking at is responding to the pressing and urgent needs that our residents are facing right now. The third is to really increase the capacity to meet low-income household needs and households in crisis. We've really, I want to say this pandemic really exposed some of the cracks that were underlying in our systems. So some of us knew it who worked kind of in this housing and social service arena. But we didn't, I wouldn't expect that we would have anticipated a pandemic lasting this long and having to pivot like we have during the last eight months. Four, we want to preserve the community's affordable housing stock. It's incredibly important that we do this now because we can't afford to lose additional stock while we're trying to stabilize the families. And five, we want to support pilot programs to enhance affordability. What we know is that we can't continue to do many of the same things that we have done. And right now, when we look at the pressing issues that our residents are facing, we know that we have to address those issues first and foremost. And so let's look at what potential response programs would possibly look like in our communities. So first and foremost, we know that we have to, we must, look at some type of landlord eviction program. And, you know, we want to create a program that will forge a process between the landlord and the residence that's in danger of eviction so that they can create a workout plan that's enforceable by law so the landlord can get paid, but the household will be stabilized. We also want to look at displacement mitigation because what we realize is that some people will be evicted and some people will go through foreclosure. So what happens with them? Well, we know first and foremost that we need to continue rental and mortgage assistance beyond the CARES money. And we've already started to pivot to providing some of those services. And we also want to look at opportunities for lease acquisition of a motel or extended stay. And so you may see some expanded services in that area as well. Thirdly, we want to look at rapid rehousing. So when families fall into displacement, we want to get them rapidly rehoused in 90 to 120 days so that they don't begin to suffer some of the ills that accompany long-term displacement. Fourth, we want to look at some of our more vulnerable populations. Historically, we looked at people who were 60 and above and how they were struggling. Now, what we know is that when we look at the very struggling populations is now 50 and above, especially if they've worked in low-paying service industry-type jobs for most of their lives. You know, with the pandemic, with the use of technology and the changing work environment, this particular population has become even more vulnerable during this time. We also want to look at targeted neighborhood, single-family rehab so that we can go into some of those more vulnerable areas and improve that quality of living and expand their ability to stay in their existing homes. As I said, it's incredibly important that we preserve our affordable housing units at this time. And we want to look at our elderly and our medically vulnerable. Right now, we know that we have elderly people who are medically vulnerable that are falling between the cracks. And we need to provide some type of support to help them with some assisted living until they can get into more mainstream programs. Right now, we know that acquiring or obtaining units is very, very difficult because the housing market is still very tight in spite of what we're going through. And if we can keep families in place by providing a rental subsidy to them for a limited term, that would help them be able to bridge unstable living condition over to a more stabilized living condition. And then finally, I want to talk about our landlords for a minute because, you know, we've been hearing, you know, a lot of conversations whirling around and landlords are feeling somewhat left out in the process, you know. But they're, you know, they're a very important part of what we do, our multifamily providers. and doing so, and by some of the landlords, many of them have not been able to make some of the capital expenditures and some of the capital improvements that's needed to keep the properties up. And so we'd love to engage in a landlord rehab program so that we can ensure and they can ensure quality of life for the people. And, you know, I want to talk about a population of people that does have a very difficult time attaining housing. And, you know, I'm talking about families that may have credit issues in their background, may have criminal issues in their background or a combination of both. They have a very, very difficult time obtaining housing. And so we want to utilize a profit guarantee program that will come in and possibly lease units or maybe even lease a, an entire small development so that our families can eviction forgiveness program. A program that would allow a path for a family to come in and regain stability. And a lot of people may not realize, but that a family that suffers with an eviction has a more difficult time than and so, you know, our families are becoming almost unhoused or we don't have the ability to be able to even work and house them.
Cheryl, it sounds like you might be having a little bit of technical difficulty.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Cheryl. Can you repeat what you just said? You were going in and out for like the past 10 seconds while you were talking.
Right, the eviction forgiveness program, we want to come in and work with the individual and create a program that would allow a path of redemption for our families so that they can go out in their own lives.
It sounds like you're cutting in and out. And I do think it's worth having a more detailed conversation about these programs, which we will. So if you don't mind, and I know in the interest of time, we'll step to the last couple of slides. Is that okay?
That is fine with me. Thank you so much, Mr. Hordell.
Thanks, Cheryl. Thanks, James, for advancing that. Good morning, Commissioners. And as you can tell, this is a multifaceted problem. There are a number of things that we're going to have to do, a number of programs that we're evaluating currently. As Carl indicated earlier, we're looking at the R3 model so that we can make sure that we develop programs rapidly. I know that we want to act quickly, but not in haste. And we're going to need to engage a number of partners. As local government, we can serve as a facilitator and a convener. But we're going to need input from the courts, the sheriff's office. We're going to need assistance from nonprofits. We're also going to need some significant cooperation and collaboration from the private sector, landlords and job producers. I think those four groups are going to be essential for us to establish a good working relationship with. And frankly, it will benefit us in the long term as well because I don't think anybody on staff uses as a one-off effort. COVID-19 may have been the impetus for us to develop this look, fairly detailed, deep dive look into evictions. But I have every confidence that we'll take the lessons we learned from our discussions and implementation of programs and make sure that those get implemented long term. Next slide, James. James, thank you. The timeline for this is going to be fairly compressed, as is everything that we do with COVID-19. We're giving you the presentation overview today. We wanted to make sure that we did respond with the overview to the three Commissioner-initiated items. Next month, in December, we'll be bringing back some programs to you. We want to make sure that Ahab has an opportunity to weigh in on some of the program options. So we'll be talking with them as well and in addition to our other partners. So we'll convene those groups as quickly as possible. In January and February, when we expect to see evictions and foreclosure notices start to rise, that's when we want to implement the programs and monitor those and tailor those. Again, very similar to what we did with the R3 process. And we were very successful in tailoring programs on the fly. Finally, we will look to the 2021 budget. It is going to be a challenge long term if there is not significant additional federal funding available. However, we're going to have the conversation with the county administrator. Bonnie has placed a very high priority on this. And she has wanted us to be as responsive as possible to the needs of the community and to the board. So we'll be bringing back items throughout the next several months. Next slide, please, James. Keys to success, I always think it's important for us to recognize what's going to be necessary for us to know whether something's been successful. We've got a lot of very innovative ideas that we'll be sharing with you over the next month to two months. We think it's essential for us to think outside the box with our partners and make sure that we're covering as much ground as we can in helping the coming wave, we suspect, coming wave of evictions and foreclosures. This can't be done without good partnerships. And I'm confident that we have very good partners in the community, both in the public sector and the private sector. So we'll be reaching out to them and making sure they're engaged and involved. Finally, we will have to look at funding. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, if there's not significant additional federal funding, then we'll have to look at our existing funding sources and make some recommendations to you as the board. Tell us what direction you want us to go. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the teams that worked on this, from the county attorney's office to public utilities, to housing, economic development. I mean, it really has been all hands on deck. And I'm looking forward to the next month to two months as we unveil some of the programmatic initiatives and make sure that we keep the board fully informed as to what we're doing and then track and monitor, again, much the same as we did with R3. With that, our presentation is concluded and we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, staff, for that presentation. Appreciate it very much. Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
Thank you. And I truly want to thank staff for bringing such a wide-ranging solution finding presentation. It's been critically important, not only in how we operate locally at the county level, but also how we interact with our state and federal partners. Given that we still have limited appropriations in the area of ship and other resources and we really don't know where we're going to go and when committees start getting together on our housing funds for next year, I think it's critically important that we help develop this kind of plan so that we can work with our state and federal partners for making the funding available. This is a great way of bringing the partners together that actually impacted and have an opportunity to impact families. And I just want to thank you so much. I know there's a lot of work that was I know there's a lot of work that was put into this, and there's a lot more work to be done, but I do truly appreciate its prioritization because I think it really makes a difference for our community, not only where they live now, but what way they'll be living in the future as we continue to invest in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overman. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I also wanted to, the thoroughness of the presentation was, was very helpful. It kind of took my breath away, which I expected, honestly, when I, when the, when we would see what was, what we were facing, I knew it would. I thought some of the things were really interesting to see that the foreclosures had gone down a few years after the former recession, but the evictions have stayed steady through all these years. So we're on, you know, that has happened for years and years, and I wasn't totally shocked to see that, but somewhat, you know, I didn't realize the distinctions to be had there. And one thing I say is, thank God that we at least made a dent in this by starting our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and taking action in this county for the last few years on that. The other thing I thought was good to see was the water bills, the enterprise, our Water Enterprise Fund. And although that compared to rents is a lot less, I imagine that is something that we can take some action on and look at, I don't know, forgiveness or some kind of, in regards to people. We certainly wouldn't want people to lose their homes because they couldn't pay their water wastewater bills. And, and as well, I'm thinking the city of Tampa, I'm not sure where they stand on that, but that would be something I would think we would have to know as well. And I don't know if they have separate enterprise services. I'm just realizing that I didn't, don't know about Plant City and Temple Terrace, or if they're served by the county. So, you know, all of that was very illuminating. I think we have a huge task, and obviously, if we didn't get more federal aid, we'll be still in a huge world of hurt. But to have this all laid out and to be understanding what we're facing is, I think, it's going to be a huge, huge challenge. And thank you so much for putting it out so clearly. And it was, at least we're on not as quite a shaky foundation as we may have been without the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, without kind of some steps that were taken to shore up our economy prior to this. So I, we're just going to face the future and the challenges that it brings and be working very hard as, as this all comes, comes, comes down to the county to, to be protecting and helping our citizens.
Mr. Hordell, Ms. Howard, thank you so very much for your presentation, and thanks to all your staff, all that you've done. We appreciate it so very, very much. Thank you so very much. I have a motion to accept item G1. Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item G1. Seeing further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All righty. Thank you, Chairman Miller. The next item is our B O C C farewell ceremony, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chairman Overman to conduct us through this ceremony.
Great, great. And I did want to know if I do that from here or should I stay here?
Either.
Stay here. Okay. Sounds like a plan. Thank you very much. Well, as the vice chair, I have the privilege of, of doing the honors of offering and organizing the farewell ceremony. And I just want to share with you how, how important that was to me, and I really, truly appreciate the opportunity. Today, we've reached a point wherein it's time to say goodbye, which is not easy to do. And in spite of the request, Commissioner Merman, you're not going to get to leave right yet. I know you wish to stay low-key in this ceremony, but you have done too much for this, for this county and have had a positive impact on this community for you to go and your work to go unrecognized. I'll be brief, so I hope you forgive me. But Commissioner Merman, I thank you for your valuable contributions to Hillsborough County over the 10, last 10 years as District One Commissioner, as well as your previous illustrious career in the state legislature. Throughout, throughout your career, you have been a champion for those without a voice, especially children and our homeless populations. This body affirmed your steadfast dedication to families and children on November 6, 2019, when we renamed the county's Lake Magdalen property to the Sandra Merman Success Neighborhood on a vote of seven to zero. I cannot think of a more well-deserved tribute. Today, it is my honor to present Commissioner Merman with a gift on behalf of the board. This lovely, oh, can I get a Vanna White assistance? Or I can go, I can get it. It's down at this end of the, under the cloth here. Over on the left-hand side. Perfect. Excellent. This lovely hand-painted ceramic serving piece is a custom made by a local artisan and potter, Kimberly Cummings of Kimberly Pottery. Her highly sought-after pottery, fashioned in the art of Myolica glazing, has a painting on the front of the county logo, as well as your name, District One, and your, your years of service. Commissioner Merman, again, we truly thank you for your years of service to the residents of Hillsborough County. Unfortunately, you cannot take it home with you today. She has to fire it one more time to give it the high-class glazing that is made possible with the Myolica glazing. So I'm going to keep it, and then I'll make sure it gets delivered to you once it's been Would you like to say?
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. I met Commissioner Merman in 1996, I believe, when she first came to the Florida Legislature. Didn't know her and hadn't had an opportunity to know at all, but I, I served with her there until I left the Senate, went to the Senate in 2000, and then had an opportunity to come back here in 2010 to, to serve with her. But I always watched her work in this community after I got to know her. And she may not realize it, but Commissioner Merman had put programs in place to help people that are so underserved, specifically our children. She worked very, very hard to put programs in place when she was a legislator, even here, those that, that needed it the most. Just unwavering, never thought about it, just continuously did it, probably got no other boys or the girls on the back, but you put programs in place to save lives, specifically our young people, our future. And for that, this community, this county, the state, needs to thank you tremendously of all the work that you've done. I know that when you leave this, this body, you're not going to stop doing that. You're going to continue to work on behalf of, of those that need it the most, specifically our young kids. And that's important, that's value important, because the days, times are even, even tougher on them because of the COVID and all the other things they have to face. But it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's been a pleasure to know you. We haven't always agreed, but we've always agreed to, to work together on behalf of, of our constituency, and, and we've crossed, we've crossed part of lines. And I didn't mind crossing part of lines with you because I knew the art of being successful in this business, the art of compromise. We had to compromise many times. So I want to thank you for what you've done. I look forward to working with you in the future. As I tell people, we're leaving the county commissioner, not leaving Hillsborough County. So thank you very much for what you've done. I think Commissioner
Mr. Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you. Simply put, I've served with a lot of elected officials over the years, and I can say, without a doubt, you are the hardest-working commissioner that I've ever served with. I've always admired the passion and drive that you bring as a commissioner. And Commissioner Overman and Miller just pointed this out, particularly with respect to helping children and those who are less fortunate. Not only have you represented your district extremely well, but you fought like hell for your district. The constituents serve as you, and your office provides is amazing. That's evidenced by the frequent email updates that you would send out, as well as the four proclamations you would try to give at every meeting. I've given her a hard time with that in the past, but it has been such a real pleasure to serve with you, and you are a model elected official that'll be missed, not only on this board, but throughout county center and in neighborhoods throughout Hillsborough County.
Excellent. Excellent. Commissioner Smith, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes. Commissioner Merman, you were my commissioner for eight years before I got here. And commissioners, if I'm your constituent, I'm one of those high-maintenance constituents. So I really want to thank Commissioner Merman for your years of service to the district that I live in. And I also want to thank your aide, Della Curry, for her years of service in your office, and before that, in the office of Rose Felita, as a constituent of District One myself. I can vouch for the fact that Della Curry has served District One very well for many years, and I will miss her in that office. And I wish her well wherever she goes from here. And I also want to thank Craig and Alphonet and Larry for being so kind to me in my first two years here, and, and wish you all well in your next chapters. But Commissioner Merman, now that we've served together for two years on this board and on the Tampa Bay Water Board, I, I just want to tell you, I have, I've learned a lot from watching you work. You've been, as Commissioner Hagan said, a very hard-working commissioner and often present in the community. And I wish you well in your next chapter. So stay safe and enjoy some free time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner White, you recognized?
Thank you. Sandy, I just want to say what a pleasure it's, it's been to get to know you and serving on the board with you. It's been a real pleasure being the South County Duo for the past six years. We've done a lot of good work down there together in tandem, but certainly, there are many things down there that you deserve the lion's share of the credit for, such as the Big Bend Road improvements that are on their way. You've worked hard on that. You have, by all means, been the champion in that initiative. Much like Commissioner Smith, I can't say enough kind words about your staff. You've just been outstanding to work with. I know that we've all made some good relationships. I know that your work is not finished. You will continue to be visible in this community, do good work in this community, and very much look forward to keeping in touch with you and just absolutely wish you all the best. As Commissioner Hagan said, you are an incredibly hard-working commissioner. Your reputation precedes you when it comes to, to hard work. And I know that that's benefited our community and our constituents through the years. And again, just, just want to say that I wish you all the best and look forward to continuing to work with you as you enter the next chapter.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
Thank you. Ironically, I probably have about the same things to say with regards to Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Merman. I've known Commissioner Merman for some decades. I think I got to know her better during 2000, 2001, when I served as an aide to Representative Sarah Romeo in Tallahassee, and when Commissioner Merman was a state representative at that time. I also know that, as I've gone around the county in the last four years, everywhere before COVID, if there was one other commissioner that would be showing up at an event that I was at, it would be Commissioner Merman. So I know you've done a lot of work and dedication to children's issues and causes and to the causes of homelessness. And I know you're going to keep working hard despite leaving the commission, and I wish you well in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I see Janet Dougherty wants to say something. Janet, you recognized?
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. Commissioner Miller was honored at our EPC meeting, but we do not have another EPC meeting. So as I was looking, so we wanted to honor Commissioner Merman, who served on our board for both of her terms and was a tireless advocate as well for the agency. Commissioner Miller, I was looking over the remarks that I made for you, and I think you had parallel paths in the legislature and the commission with Commissioner Merman. And I think the Lord put both of you in the right place at the right time to do good work for the public. As I was looking through your remarks as well, Commissioner Merman, you have been a mentor, a friend, a trailblazer, a leader. And again, you served wonderfully as a public servant for decades. I wanted to personally thank you. You were instrumental in recommending me to the governing board, which aided in my trajectory to my current position as a public servant. And you've served in so many different roles, Commissioner. You've served on the Port Authority and Tampa Bay Water and the Hart Board and as chairman of the B O C C. But one of the things I wanted to say to you is that you've saved lives through your support of mask mandates or your crucial, crucial legislation to protect infants when you passed the law that allowed young, struggling parents that were overwhelmed to leave their infant children at fire stations. And I'll never forget that, that you passed that in the legislature. You had a distinguished career, and everyone at the agency wanted to personally thank not only you, but your staff, Della Curry, she's amazing, Craig Dewisak. We have goodies for all of you, cards from the agency, checkup collections, we have your Lucky Turtle and the Giving Tree. But Commissioner, we created a plaque for you as well. It's our EPC bird plaque. And what it says is that we thank you for your dedicated service to the citizens of Hillsborough County and your longstanding support of EPC and the protection of our national, natural resources, your EPC family. And it has the date on it as well. We also have our iconic EPC bird pictures for Craig and Della, again, for helping us. And hopefully, we can get together and do a team's call and celebrate you with all of staff who also want to say thank you. But again, thank you for your service, and I know you and Commissioner Miller are not only a phone call away, but will go on to continue to work to make this community a wonderful place to live and grow your family. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. I really appreciate that. Commissioner Merman, I know I don't follow instructions well sometimes, but I'm, I'm glad I, I chose to ignore your suggestion that we just
You did.
But I, I wanted to say thank you and offer you an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, the script, this was not to be on the script. So, but thank you very much, Commissioner Miller. I think I even gave specific instructions. Please, I don't want anything, I want this day to be about you because of, well, your history too. But I, I just, you know, I, I really, I love this county so much. When I moved here, when I got out of college, I, you know, I've lived in different areas. And honestly, there's just so much we can do to help our citizens. And when I got to be a county commissioner, I'll be honest, I had no idea what
And when I got to be a county commissioner, I'll be honest, I had no idea what I was getting into. I think we, you didn't either.
None of us did.
So, but I just thought, you know, I'm just going to continue the work I did in Tallahassee. I want to help our citizens, help our children more than anything. And, you know, we've been very successful. I have a lot of appreciation and thanks to, I look up to the sky because of all the people on the floors above that I have gotten to be friends with, that have, we have sat and dreamed up all these great ideas to make things better for our kids and for our families. And so, thank you up there. I could go through the whole list, but I know I'll leave people off, you know. But specifically, Jean Early's been just such a dear friend over the years. Ron Barton, Lucia Garces, just great friends over the years. And of course, Bonnie and Christine. Thank you all very, very much for your help and assistance. You know, this job is not easy because you want to, when you talk to staff, you want to confide in them. Yet, you're not quite sure, you know, where you should start and stop because you're giving too much information. But I got to tell you, everybody in this whole building is worth a million dollars. And they, we have the best staff in any government, I think, in the whole state of Florida. Next, of course, I do want to thank Della and Craig. Della has been with me since the beginning and begged her to stay. She wasn't sure at first, but we've just, I just love both of them so much, Craig and Della. They have been great, and I guess they're going to get to stay on with Harry at least for a couple of months. So I think he's not going to let you go because once I, once you got, I got to work with you, it really was, I realized you guys are worth a gold mine. So thank you all very, very much. And just thank each and every one of you, the support that you've given. I'm going to miss voting on anything sports related, that's for sure. Yeah, don't look behind you. But that's going to be, and the film. I was going to give you a break today and do it one last time on the film. But no, but it's all, it's all great. And Commissioner Miller, everything you've done, but we'll get into your remarks later. And Kimberly, of course, Commissioner Kemp, Mary Ella, you all are going to make a great team. Commissioner White, going forward. So just keep doing what we're doing and just protect these citizens out there, protect our kids and our families. That's all they want. They want to know that somebody really cares about them. And that's what I tried to do in my 10 years, is really care about our citizens, be a servant leader. Don't do anything different. Don't worry about who takes credit for something, but just get it done. And I think I said that many times. I did work hard, but I worked hard because I wanted to get the job done. I think one of my most proudest accomplishments has really been the Haven Poe House. It was, didn't seem big at first, but when you get involved and you see how many homeless kids are going on to college and having a great, successful life. Of course, the opioid lawsuit, another accomplishment, it's coming to fruition. You guys will get to hear about that at some point. And very excited about those settlement dollars that are going to go to help people that are addicted. So just some really, and of course, the Leg Mag and everything we've done for kids. And we're hoping to take that statewide. So we're just very excited and on to the next thing. And really enjoyed every minute here. Won't miss coming up to the garage. I'm sorry to make the list of the things I won't miss, and that will be one of them. And the ever-changing facility, dining facility downstairs. But anyway, no, it's all good. And this county's on a great road. I know you've got some bumps ahead of you, but you'll do great things. So thank you all very, 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 very much, especially all you upstairs who helped make things, helped me be successful. You really did. I thank you all.
Thank you very, very much. I didn't, actually, I didn't ask if either of you would like to, Ms... Would either of you like to say something, Ms. Wise?
Well, we didn't prepare anything because that was off-script.
Well, I know. See, I was the only one that actually broke the rules here. So everybody else was like, oh, okay. I'm like, no, no, no.
I can share my comments with Commissioner Merman separately.
Okay.
I just wanted to echo everything, but also say it's been a pleasure working with and for you. And I think of the challenging times and your perseverance with the Dana Shores community and undergrounding and all those late-night meetings, but it got done, and it's the first in the state. And your leadership was certainly responsible for that. Vaping, needle exchanges, opioids, it goes on and on. But it's been a pleasure working with you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Thanks again, Commissioner.
Commissioner Merman, so anyway, I wanted to also thank Commissioner Merman. I remember initially when it was you and all the boys. And we worked together through a lot of really hard budget times. When I first came to the county and you were here, and there were a lot of hard decisions that had to be made, especially early on. And you showed leadership and you, I really appreciate the honor to have served with you. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Wise. Well, thank you again, Commissioner Merman. And you're not allowed to leave either. I got your phone number, so. Okay, so now we will begin the farewell ceremony for our Honored Chairman, Miller. So what can I say about Leslie Les Miller Jr. that hasn't already been said? He has gladly and with great purpose and determination put his heart and soul into this nation, this state, and our community, serving in numerous capacities, including 10 remarkable years here on this board. When I think about all your achievements and accomplishments, I am both humbled and inspired. You deserve the happiest of retirement there can be. But we'll be interested to see how quiet it might be. I doubt that's going to be the case. But we have created a video that actually is a tribute to you, sir. So can I ask the staff to play the video now, please?
Hi, Leslie Miller Jr.
Hi, Leslie Miller Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States of the state of Florida.
And government of the United States and the state of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
Of Hillsborough County.
Of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats, Congressman Miller.
Growing up, a lot of people helped me to get to where I am. My dad, he went to the foster plan for 42 years. My mom, if you ever seen, was a helper. That's what she was, she was made. So people helped me get to where I am. So I figured the only way I could get back, give back to communities, because I didn't have a lot of money, was involved in politics, trying to make life better for those that I serve. Today's a great day for Hillsborough County, and I'm very proud to join our residents and the business committee to celebrate the official opening of Singapore Partners, housing the top product of our services. And this collaboration is a great example of how we can come together as a community and help families who need a safe and affordable place to live. We need to get every citizen of Hillsborough County to be in our service. I know it's going to be tough. We need your help. We never know what's going to happen in Hillsborough County. We're the fastest running county in this country. I'm going to be out there doing my very best, and I have to knock on doors myself. We have people that are hungry. We have people that are way asleep at night. If I could change the homelessness situation, if I could find affordable housing for everyone, if I could fix this transition system in Hillsborough County, that would be a massive part. To me, those are the most important things.
I wouldn't be an elected official today for some of the people that put their lives on the line for us to do, be able to serve. I mean, everyone now understands what black people get in this county. Let's get to celebrate the history of black people, what they've done in Hillsborough County. And they came in large numbers. Some of them came, some of them walkers, but they got there after the time. So this means a lot to them, and I'm just proud to be here.
I was a music major one time when I first went to college. And I realized that I was never going to be a superstar. I wasn't going to record for Motown. So I changed my major to political science, but I can sing. And most of my singing now is done in the shower. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed aloft?
Hello, Mr. Richard Fitzgerald. This is Leslie Miller, County Commissioner of Hillsborough County. And I know you are the County Executive for Allagana County. I want to thank you for participating in this friendly wager of something important that is giving back to our veterans. And I want to ask you, what color lightning jersey would you like to be wearing? We're coming in three different colors, so I want to make sure you get the right color when you lose this wager.
Executive Fitzgerald, you probably remember my face, and as you can see, I'm wearing this awful, ugly, painful jersey. You got us this year, even though we lost, everyone's a winner because we're supporting our troops that put their lives on the line for us every day. This is my family, and to have my family come to my hometown and my whole county means the world to me. It's like bringing it home, coming to everyone. Old Americans that are here today and those that have gone on and paved the way for people like myself and others to serve them, put their lives on the line, shedded blood, shedded tears, worked hard. And it can mean nothing more than us coming out, like myself, to tell them thank you for what they've done. EPC has played a major role for 50 years, and we got to continue to make sure that you're grounded, continue to make sure that our environment's protected for the next 50, 100 more years.
This is the kickoff for the Illinois campaign, Hillsborough County employees and their departments to make a difference in this community. So we all came together, almost 200 employees, volunteering in their departments to help those people less fortunate, changing their lives, and that's important.
Tampa Bay area is the best kept secret in the world. And they're now starting to find out about who we are, what we do, and what we have to offer. So this was the beginning of breaking down those barriers of Jim Crow segregation in Tampa, Hillsborough County. So we have to celebrate this, and we can't let our young people, whether you're black, white, or different, understand what the issue's all about because black people, African-American people, they're a major part in the history of Tampa, Hillsborough County. But we have got to make a difference. We must make a difference. This board can make a difference in this county. And maybe send a message to other counties and then other parts of the state, other parts of this country, to everyone, regardless of our race, regardless of our sexual orientation, regardless of our income, regardless of our political ideologies, our political differences, whatever the case may be. We have got to work to make a difference, trying to make a difference in this country, trying to make a difference in the state, trying to make a difference in this county. And let's put this with different races aside. We cannot have a divided country. That's what being an elected public service owner is. It's a full-time job. It's a 24/7 job. You may go home, you get phone calls at home, people know who you are. You go to the grocery store, they know who you are. On the weekends, you go to church, they know who you are. You don't run to get rich because you never will. You don't run to be famous because I don't want to be famous. And I never ran trying to do something, get elected the next year. If I didn't get elected the next year, at least I did the best I could. As long as I'm able to help people, those are, to me, those are the most important things.
Wow, that was wonderful, full of a lot of memories there. And I just wanted to say, as my commissioner, I live in your district. I now have the honor and privilege of reading a very, very special proclamation. Could someone bring that up, please? It's the, yes, please. Yep. I got your big toy, another thing to put on your wall. I have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners Chairman Leslie Les Miller Jr. has spent his life serving the public, enabling communities to grow stronger and healthier, and the residents to have a better opportunity than previous generations were afforded. And whereas, as a manager of minority business development and governmental relations for Tampa General Hospital in his hometown, Chairman Miller helped countless members of minority communities achieve their dreams. And whereas, while serving in the Florida House and then the Florida Senate from 1992 until 2006, Chairman Miller was the legislative champion for H. Lee Moffett Cancer Center, assuming that gavel from the acclaimed facility's namesake. And whereas Chairman Miller, a U.S. Air Force veteran, persuaded his fellow lawmakers to visit Moffett, a leadership initiative that enabled him to develop wide support for the center and pass a measure that earmarked a percentage of Florida's tobacco sales tax for cancer research and patient care. And whereas, in 2010, Chairman Miller was elected to represent District Three on the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, where he served for a decade, the last two years as chairman, and shared his expertise on numerous boards and councils while remaining actively engaged in civic affairs. And whereas Chairman Miller has fought tirelessly against bigotry and racism, ensured residents have clean drinking water and parks, uses, used his institutional knowledge and life experiences to build bridges and consensus, and served as a steadying leader while Hillsborough County faced the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, on November 16th, in his honor of this outstanding public servant, who has dedicated himself to his country, state, and county, the flags of the United States, Florida, and Hillsborough County are flying at the U.S. Capitol in Washington, D.C., the state Capitol in Tallahassee, and at the Frederick B. Carl County Center in Tampa, respectively. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 12th through November 18th, 2020, and every year hereafter as the Leslie Les Miller Jr. Lifetime in Public Service Week in Hillsborough County, expresses its heartfelt gratitude to Leslie Les Miller Jr. for making the county a better place to live, work, and play, and wishes him the very best in this next chapter of his life. Executed this 16th day of November, 2020, Mr. Chairman, we and your fellow commissioners have some special gifts for you that I think will perfectly symbolize all of your years of public service. They are the American flag of this great nation, which you courageously defended during your exemplary service in the United States Air Force. This board thanks you for your service. With that, if you'll bring the case up and put it up on the dais, just bring each of them. The second is the flag of the state of Florida, which you served with honor and distinction during your terms in the State House and the Senate. And the county flag of our community, your community, where you have forever improved the lives of people in Hillsborough County. On behalf of this board and the residents, we thank you. And as you just learned from the proclamation, these flags are flying today in three prominent centers of government. In addition, these display cases will preserve them for your enjoyment and that of your family and friends. I want to thank Mr. John Mueller for his efforts in securing the county flag as well as the lovely Chanute Field memorabilia, which we use to cover your gifts. It's my understanding that you served at this base during your active duty.
I did, I did.
It's pretty remarkable when people fall in love with you, what they'll do. It's pretty remarkable when people fall in love with you, what they'll do. Congratulations and thank you. Now let's hear from some special guests that we hopefully still have on the line. Congressman Castor, I'd like to see if you'd like to say a few words. Can we open the mic for her? Is she available? Has she stolen?
Good morning, or good afternoon now. Well, it's a pleasure to be with you. Today I'll be submitting a congressional record piece to honor the life of service of Chairman Les Miller. Before I paraphrase the congressional record piece, I do want to thank Congress, Commissioner Sandy Merman and Dela Curry for being outstanding partners and public servants as well. Commissioner Merman, your devotion to children across our community in the state of Florida, children's welfare, kids in foster care, you've truly made a difference, and I look forward to continuing to work with you after your time on the commission comes to a close. But this congressional record piece that I'll be submitting today here in Washington is really one of admiration and respect for the unselfish work of Chairman Miller. A Tampa native, Middleton High School drum major and graduate, U.S. Air Force servant, University of South Florida graduate with bachelors and masters, and the first African-American president of the Student Government Association and president of the Black Student Union, but Chairman Miller's service was just starting after his academic career. He, as was noted, he served with distinction in the Florida House of Representatives and in the Florida Senate. He was the first Democrat in the entire state of Florida to ever serve as both the Florida House and Senate Minority Leader, and his hard work there earned him many honors from the Florida Education Association, Florida League of Cities, the Florida Housing Coalition, received the Dr. Martin Luther King Interfaith Memorial Service Robert W. Saunders Award for his efforts to promote civil rights. Chairman Miller just has always been an integral part of our community, and his devotion to the Moffitt Cancer Center is a fine example of that. Because of Les' early commitment to Moffitt, it has now grown into the only Florida National Cancer Institute designated conference of cancer center in the state of Florida. It really is the premier cancer research institute in the southeast United States and one of the tops in the entire country. And that was because Les was already a cancer survivor, even before Moffitt opened. But throughout his life, he and his loved ones needed Moffitt, just like many others, many other neighbors across the Tampa Bay community, but he had the tools to do something about it and to make sure it was there to help lift so many of our neighbors struggling with cancer. He made Moffitt one of his priorities by earmarking a percentage of Florida's tobacco sales taxes for research and patient care, and he continues to give back through Moffitt's annual men's health forum, which encourages men regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic background, to get the information and guidance they need on prostate cancer and men's health. So Les, I know you credit Moffitt for being alive today, and it's made, you've made it a life mission to help the cancer center, and you'll continue to do that. You know, Les Miller also was relentless in fighting for what is right. It inspired him to lead efforts throughout his career to end gun violence and keep guns out of the hands of people like the men who shot his son Trey. Les was tough, but he was collaborative all along the way, and he won successes despite strong opposition here from special interests and even many within the Florida Legislature. But he never gave up. He persevered in his efforts to end gun violence. Also, even in the face of threats to local officials personally, when the legislature went too far and tried to target local government officials. And during his tenure here on the Hillsborough County Commission, he continued to improve the lives of many, fighting for affordable housing, standing up for clean water, and public health protections, especially due during the coronavirus. Les, thank you. You are a true public servant in the best sense of the word, a life member of the Tampa branch of the NAACP, a deacon of the New Mountain Zion Missionary Baptist Church. You continue to uplift and highlight the history of all of our African-American neighbors. You embody what it is to be a public servant and citizen. You've shown the way for generations to come. So on behalf of the citizens of this state of Florida and our great country, I'm proud to honor you today by submitting this tribute into the congressional record for all of your formidable efforts and selfless devotion to all of our neighbors. Thank you, Les Miller.
Congresswoman Castor, thank you so very much for your kind words. I appreciate it so very, very much. We've worked together on many issues, and I've always had opportunity to call on you, and you never wavered in the things that I wanted to put in place, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done to help me out in my career. And I'm leaving the county commission, I'm not leaving Hillsborough County, so I'm here to do whatever I can to help you in the future. So thank you so very, very much.
Yeah, thank you very, very much for being available today. I really appreciate it, and she said all the right stuff. Senator, State Senator Janet Cruz was originally planning to be with us today, but she had to attend a legislative business today in Tallahassee, so she wasn't able to join us. But she has provided with, excuse me, she has provided us with a written tribute to you, which I'd like to read. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" Well, Commissioner Miller has done more than enough. His life has been marked by years of service to his country, to his state, and to his community. From his time in the Air Force to minority leader in the state legislature to now as the Chair of Hillsborough County Commission, Les Miller embodies what it means to be a faithful public servant. Les is, it is civil servants like you that keep our communities flourishing. I trust you take tremendous pride in all that you've accomplished. Your work for our great state and for our county is unmatched, and you will be dearly missed, but I know that our county's loss is your family's gain. Congratulations again, and I wish you the very best in retirement, from Senator Janet Cruz.
Biggest of the cruise. Thank you very much.
That was wonderful. Now, next on our slate of appreciative leaders, I'd like to introduce and ask if Councilman Orlando Goodez with the Tampa City Council would like to make a special presentation. Is Councilman Goodez available?
Councilman, you're on mute.
I saw him earlier.
He's having some...
Oh, there he is. Now he's off mute.
Commissioners, it seems like the councilman is having some issues with his...
Okay, well, I can, I'm going to offer, I guess, some words until he can get that resolved, and then we can come back to Councilman Goodez. If that's... Does it look like he's going to be able to get on? No, no. Come back to him. And he may give us some guidance on what to do with the proclamation if he's not able to join us. Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much. I get to brag all about you for a while, and I'm going to do it without crying, too. I'm going to try, anyway. But as I mentioned, Commissioner Miller, you are and have been my commissioner for my district, and I want to thank you for the example and the mentorship you embodied prior to my joining this board and then during our work here together for the citizens of Hillsborough County. The way you have encouraged us as leaders to do the right thing, and how you have supported our county employees for the great work that they do, it is clear that public service is part of your DNA. You have stood firm and courageously fought back against the racism that still lives in our community while urging us to be vigilant in pursuing diversity and equality in our policies and decisions. And your passion towards protecting and fostering a county where we want to live, work, and play shows the legacy we have to celebrate today. In the words of General Douglas MacArthur, who may have been best known for his wartime exploits, but also played a crucial role in the formation of President Franklin D. Roosevelt's New Deal programs, I quote, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent. You, sir, are a true leader, and it has been my honor to serve with you. Thank you for your service, and please try to enjoy your well-deserved retirement." I'll try not to interrupt it too many times. I have your phone number, too, now. Actually, have we gotten any resolution with Councilman Goodez? But I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Councilman Goodez, please join us.
Can you hear me?
Turn it up a little bit.
Councilman Goodez.
Hello?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I can hear you guys fine, so you ready?
Uh, there's given a comment now, so if you can just unmute your microphone and show your video, they should be able to hear you.
Councilman Goodez, are you still on the line, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm on the line.
All right. Go ahead with your presentation, sure. You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. This is a very special day for me, a day that I'm kind of saddened, but I'm happy, because sometimes things do come to an end. As I sit back and I reminisce of the years that I've known Les Miller, State Representative Miller, Senator Miller, Commissioner Miller, community leader, I'm reminded of our great organization, achievement in every field of human endeavor. Some of you may not know what that means, but Commissioner Miller knows our motto of Capella Saffater Incorporated. As a member of that great plan, that holds true in everything, everything that we do, and Commissioner Miller is an epitome of achievement in every field of human endeavor. He's done everything possible, and as a Black man talking to a Black man, I'm so proud to call you a friend, a colleague, a mentor, and a leader of our community, a leader of our Black community. No matter what happens or goes on, everyone says we need to call Les. We have to call Les. Whether you agree with him or disagree with him, he's always been our leader, person who's going to give you what I call the butter from the duck. He's going to give you the truth, whether you like it or not, because he's thought about it methodically. I can appreciate that. I can appreciate when I served with his son in the police department, I used to always say, "Man, why'd your dad vote this way? Why'd your dad do this? Why'd your dad do that?" He'd say, "Call and ask him." Of course, me and me, I'd call and ask, and he'd tell me. And I sit back and I think about why he voted on a situation, or why he did what he did. And I would sit and say, "Well, I guess he's right." But as a person who sits where he's been sitting for many, many decades and years, I can sit back and say, "The job is hard. You can't please everybody, but you do the best you can." What I can say to Commissioner Miller, he's done the best he could do for our communities, and he continues to do that. And again, I'm just so very proud to know that he's always striving for better. He's looking for the best for everybody. I just say, "Thank you. Thank you for a job well done, because you've been a great servant." On behalf of my colleagues, Joe, Harry, Louis, Charlie, Bill, and John, we finally fitting to you, you've commissioned Miller his just due commendation. Commissioner Leslie J. Miller Jr. in grateful appreciation for the countless years of outstanding dedication and service to the community, Tampa City Council presents this commendation to honor Commissioner Leslie J. Miller, in recognition of his perseverance and his diligence to the service of others. Commissioner Leslie J. Miller has spent decades of his life serving in politics throughout the community, the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, and the state of Florida. He is a tremendous leader, a patriot, and a champion of public service. Commissioner Miller is greatly respected and admired for his leadership and his tenacity as he is revered as influential in our community. His service has touched the lives of many. His principles, philosophies, and achievements will spread from generation to generation. He's with humble hearts and tremendous gratitude that the members of Tampa City Council bestowed this commendation to Commissioner Leslie J. Miller for his longstanding contributions to the community on this day, 12th of November, 2020. And again, congratulations, Commissioner Miller.
Councilman Goodez, thank you very much. To you and your colleagues, I truly appreciate it. I appreciate you tremendously. I do remember those phone calls that you called me sometime when you were in the police department, you talked to my son, but then you delved in and got involved in this political business yourself, and now you serve on city council, and I want to commend you on the job that you're doing so very, very well. And as I always told you, and my wife told you also, that your job is to work on behalf of those people that you represent. They're your bosses, they're the ones that put you there, and you're doing just that. I'm going to tell you something about Commissioner, Councilman Goodez, there's a lady that called about a tree in her yard that fell. Not only did he call for the city of Tampa to go out there and take a look at it, he went out there himself to see exactly what was going on, and that's going to make him a great city councilman. We're members of the same fraternity, Capella Saffeta Incorporated, and achievement is our fundamental purpose, and he's doing just that. So Councilman Goodez, keep it up. I'm always here to help you out, man. Just pick up the phone and give me a call. Bye, new pie.
Bye, new pie. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very, very much for participating today and your wonderful words. I'm going to open it up to the commissioners to give them an opportunity to speak. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make my remarks from the podium.
It's a surprise, apparently.
Is this off the air? Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first of all thank Congresswoman Castor, Senator Cruz, and Councilman Goodez for all of their kind comments. As Commissioner Miller has all too often reminded me and this board and on the old time around here, as the old timer, it's a real pleasure for me to recognize my good friend, Les Miller. And I want to first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Oberman for giving me this opportunity. Commissioner Miller, as you said during our EPC recognition ceremony, our friendship goes back to 2003. I was a 34-year-old, recently elected commissioner, all of five months, and you were walking in immaculately dressed, as always. Thank you, Gwen. And you said something that to me, something that you would never forget, the fact that my family and I helped campaign for Gwen, that you would never forget. Well, at that time, neither one of us had any idea that seven and a half years later, we'd be serving together on the county. And I point this out not to go down memory lane, but to illustrate what is a rare thing in politics these days, and that is that you're a man of the word. In an era of extreme partisanship on both sides of the aisle, you are a refreshing reminder of a time when elected officials would have differences of opinion and disagreements that occurred, but it wasn't personal. They would work together to find compromise and to reach solutions. Back then, decisions were made on what's best for our community, our state, and our nation. And you're that kind of leader. Unlike today, when all too often discourse-
Is that common? And votes are made with one eye on the next election, or based on fear of being primaried within your own party if you do not toe the party line? We have not agreed on every issue, but regardless of our positions, win or lose, you are always a gentleman, a statesman, and someone who would always strive for solutions and compromise and to do what's best for your district and for our community. That's why I wasn't surprised when I read your bio, and it says, and I'm gonna read it, "While in the legislature, you established a reputation for compromise, cooperation, and bipartisanship." Well, we could certainly use a lot more of that in DC and in Tallahassee. Along the commission, you've been a voice of reason and displayed a steady hand as chairman on this board during some very challenging and difficult times. You were fierce advocate for your district, and I recall you saying on many occasions that when someone calls you, if they don't get a return call within 24 hours, call the hospitals, because something's definitely wrong with you. Your exemplary constituent service is why your district has overwhelmingly reelected you to the House, Senate, and County Commission. So many of your accomplishments and projects that you spearheaded are well-known, many were mentioned today. However, as a youth sports and parks guy, I've always appreciated the park projects that you have championed in your district. Progress Village Baseball Fields, Ruben Pageant, Lucy Dell come to mind. As a countywide commissioner, I was very proud to work with you on a public-private partnership to help Belmont Heights Little League.
That's right.
Due to your outstanding service and leadership, I strongly believe that this board should honor you above and beyond our typical recognition ceremony. In light of your support for youth sports, parks and recreation, and park projects you've championed, staff and I felt that a park would be an ideal way to honor you. And as Commissioner Overman pointed out, we took similar action last year in recognizing Commissioner Merman. Les, it's been a pleasure to serve with you the last 10 years. It's an honor for me to call you my good friend, and I'm very proud to make this motion that we approve renaming the All Peoples Life Center to the Leslie Les Miller, Jr. All Peoples Community Park and Life Center in recognition of his lifetime of public service that has made Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play, and in working with the county attorney's office in order to be consistent with our board policy that the effective date is 12/1. And before we vote, I do want to flip this over and show you a little rendering of what it's gonna look like. I think it's very, very beautiful and something that you can be very proud of. I'm gonna be very proud to be there when we officially unveil it. The last thing that I'll say, well, I think it'll be the last thing, and as we heard during public comment, Ms. Robinson mentioned that you're gonna be playing golf in your retirement. I want you to know that I look forward to playing golf with you. I'm absolutely confident you will be better dressed than me, but I'm gonna warn you, I'm gonna give you some strokes, but I'm gonna put a whooping on you, okay? But I'm gonna miss you, my friend. I'll love you like a brother, and please know that I'm always here for you.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Merman. Can we get a, any other comment, or I take a roll call, though?
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent, excellent. I have in the queue, thank you very much, Commissioner Hagan, for bringing that and giving us an opportunity to participate in the renaming of the All Peoples Community Park and Life Center. It's an honor that's well deserved. I see Commissioner White's hand raised. Oh, and then I'll call on Commissioner Merman. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yep. Give me just a moment, Madam Vice Chair, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
I just wanted to say a few words. We've disagreed on some issues, a few major issues, in fact, but we forged a friendly and supportive relationship. And when I look at my relationships on the board, you're perhaps a commissioner that I'm the most friendly with. I have a high level of respect for you. I've learned a lot from you, watching you in action through the years, both as a member of the board and during the times that you've chaired the board. So I just want to let you know that I wish you the very best in the future. I know that you're not going to just fade away quietly into retirement. You are still very much going to be intimately involved with what's going on politically, not only in District 3, but across Hillsborough County. I look forward to working with you as the opportunity arises. As Commissioner Hagan has said, you are a statesman. You told a story recently about how members of the opposing parties would have the ability to come together, share dinner, things like that, after a day on the floor. And, you know, I very much wish that we could return to those days, to where we have political discourse in the boardroom or on the legislative floor, but we can be friendly and cordial and have strong relationships outside of that setting. So, I do wish you the very best. I'd very much like to stay in touch, and I'm here for you if I can ever help you in any way whatsoever.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll make some comments about us on my opportunity. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Les, I always have wanted to call him my older brother, but we're off six months, so I guess I can't really say that. So, my younger brother. And, you know, he has said that we have known each other since 1996, when we were colleagues in the Florida House. And he did, he showed me the way around, literally. And we accomplished some great things together. I watched him in the Florida Senate where he really, his leadership and skills really, I think, took shape, because you were president, I mean, chair of your caucus, you know, minority leader. I mean, you just did so much. I mean, in the Florida House, you could stand in the back and wave your microphone, but it's not nearly as impactful as on the Florida Senate floor, when you are really there and your leadership skills really shown. And I think that's where I saw and respected you more, because you just had done so much. Now that we've been here on the B O C C together, I think I'm seeing this whole different side of you, this really kind, gentle creature who likes to cry a lot, who dresses really good, and I enjoy buying you ties every Christmas. So, I'll get you one again this year. But I just, that side of you, because there is a soft heart. He stands up, like, you can be in these great discussions about standing up for civil rights, and then this soft place in your heart comes out as compassion for those same people. So, there's strength, and then there's caring and kindness. And I think that's what makes me attracted to you as a friend, as a compatriot here on the board, because I know how much you care about the citizens in our community. I mean, it's just, it's remarkable. And you know, public service is a calling. You have to go through so much, you know, campaigns and citizen rhetoric, positive and negative, the demands of the job, which is really so time-consuming. I think that is what kind of unexpected for me coming into the job was the time involvement. You know, the legislature is so part-time. But I think you've always risen above all that. And to be this really true leader, and I think a lot of people have said this, but what does being a leader mean for Les Miller? And it's that strong, disciplined, that means knowing the rules all the time, and strong, disciplined man, but that's that soft, caring spirit that really I've grown to admire so much. And so, your wisdom is so unparalleled, and always showed up in every discussion I think we had. But you're respectful, always respectful of others. You know, I've seen you in some pretty tough discussions, you know, and as intelligent and service-driven as you are, you really do not suffer at the expense of any scheme. And PACE program is an example, there have been several others. You are so, you can see through people that come here with a lot of projects, a lot of different things they want to do, you know, here, and you just can see through it to say, "Oh, that's a scheme. We can't do that." But I think that you're just such a straight shooter, and if someone doesn't like something, too bad. You know, you're gonna shoot straight, and if they don't like what they hear, too bad. And I know your work in the community is gonna continue. I'm so proud of what you and I have accomplished together, and I think you're a true friend. And I know, and I'm saying publicly, you have crossed party lines to support me, and I appreciate that more than you'll ever know, because it wasn't politics, it was the friendship, and it was the support we've had for each other over the years. And that is what means more to me than anything. And so, you are a true friend, true patriot for this community, and I just, I love you very much.
Love you, too, Sandy.
Now, we're all gonna be crying here in just 30 seconds. Thank you, Commissioner Merman, I truly appreciate those words. Commissioner Smith, I see your hand raised. Would you like to-
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Miller. You certainly have an impressive record of many years of service to our county and our state, before that, as so many have described here today. You have put in years of leadership on this county commission and on many boards, and on most of those boards, you have served as chairman. In fact, you've been the chair of most of the boards I'm on, and I've learned a lot from your example. Most recently, I'd like to thank you for your strong leadership of our county through this pandemic. Your courage in sticking to the mask mandate despite some very ugly opposition has undoubtedly been instrumental in saving lives in our community. And that's just one example of your courage in doing what you know to be right, and let the chips fall where they may. I wish you a wonderful retirement, and I hope you get to travel with your lovely wife, Gwen, to marvelous places sometime soon, when traveling becomes safe again. I hope your golf game does reach a level where you can best, Commissioner Hagan, on occasion. And I wish you to stay safe and enjoy your next chapter, and keep singing. Thank you.
That was excellent. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I said earlier, it's kind of ironic, but my relationships go back several decades with both Commissioner Merman and Commissioner Miller to the state legislature, again, where I was an aide to Representative Sarah Romeo during the 2001 legislative sessions, and became closer, spent a lot of time with Representative Arthenia Joyner at the time, who had just filled your seat, Commissioner Miller, when you had moved to the Senate. I did, I did just learn, too, I didn't realize that you were, I guess, were you the only minority leader for both the House and the Senate? Or were you the, was it the first black minority leader? I didn't quite get, that was something new for me.
And the Senate as minority leader, black, white, green, Indian, indifferent. I was the first.
Uh-huh. It's pretty amazing. I know that that's probably more something that was possible, I guess, under term limits, but that's a pretty, that's pretty unique, and I was a little, I didn't realize that when I have followed so much of the other work that you've done. So, that was, that was very, adds to your, of course, legacy. And I just wanted to say also, the other that I learned was that I didn't know that you were an aspiring Motown singer, so, so I guess, I guess as Commissioner Smith has said, you'll have your time in the shower still, maybe more time to enjoy that, and maybe in other venues as well. But you've had a long and distinguished career, as we've noted, in the State House, the Senate, the County Commission, as well as USF. And I wish you well with your, all your endeavors in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I don't know if Ms. Wise and Miss Beck would like to speak, but you're recognized.
Yes, please.
Go right ahead.
Because we have a-
I know the sign's in the way, but-
You can see my on the screen. Very good. Everyone has spoken, of course, about Commissioner Miller's illustrious career, and that, of course, has all been well said. Your dedication to public service is tremendous. You have shown me thoughtfulness, guidance, and the confidence you have placed in me, I will be forever grateful. And you have a no-nonsense approach to problem-solving, but always with the constituent at heart, and I very much appreciate that. You have shown true care and concern for my well-being. I will remember that always. We meet a lot of people- We meet a lot of people through the course of our lives. And occasionally, somebody touches you and helps you become a better person. And for that, Commissioner Miller, you have done that for me. And I appreciate that for always.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. We have something in common. We belong to the same club. And I, I appreciate all of your help. And I'm here for you. I know you're going to be a great county commissioner, county administrator. And just continue to do the work that you're doing. And we'll be great. You'll be great.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Ms. Beck, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. And I'd also want to echo Bonnie's comments and say that it's been an honor and a privilege to work for you and with you. And you've also taught me quite a bit, just by being able to watch you and observe you in all your roles as chair, which they've been in every board I've worked for you on, is you've been the chair. But I think back at the beginning of your tenure, you did something that prior commissioners were not able to do by bringing clean water to a community that had struggled with that for a long time. And it, it hadn't been able to be done until you somehow got that done. And, and that was a huge accomplishment at the beginning of your tenure. And at the end of your tenure, I, I can't help but think of your leadership and work on the E P G. I know exactly what that was like and how hard it was and how difficult it was, particularly in the early days. And I say thank goodness for your leadership and your steady hand and good judgment and wise counsel. And you saw this county through a very difficult time in those early days. So I just want to say that you've also been so decisive. And somebody who can, no matter in any briefing, it's the fastest briefings I ever have, because you quickly assimilate whatever it is. You already knew about it and off you're on to other business. So it's been a true honor to work for you. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your, your work. I appreciate your legal advice that you've given me. You probably kept me out of trouble a lot, but I do appreciate it. And I hope that you can, I'm not hoping, continue to do the great work you're doing in leading this, this county on a legal path. And you and your staff, you've got a great staff. And I appreciate every word, all of you. So thank you so very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. I'm not seeing any other hands at the moment. So we've come to a place that we've all been waiting for. Chair, would you like to share with us your feelings? Please take your time.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for allowing me the opportunity to, to do all those things that you all have brought forth. Taking a, a young man out of East Tampa, whose father worked in a phosphate plant and mother cleaned people's houses. She only finished the eighth grade. My father was able to finish high school back then when black boys went to school six months out of the year and worked six months out of the year. And they, I just wish they were allowed to see this. And my sister, who was also, she was nine months, nine years older than me, but had a guidance in my life. And the Lord allowed me to come out of East Tampa, do those things that I did. And I want to, I just, I never would have had the opportunity to do that if it wasn't for him. The citizens of District Three, thank you for allowing me to serve you for 10 years. Every decision I made, I made it with you in heart, you in my mind, and all the citizens of this county. When I, when I made decisions, I thought about you, what was best for you. And I couldn't, I couldn't make everyone happy. You just can't do this business. But you always try to do the very best you can to protect the lives of those that you represent. We all took an oath for that, to serve, protect, defend. Whether we're not sheriffs or police officers, but we still have to do that as elected officials. And the people of District Three, I thank you for allowing me to do that for 10 years of serving you. I will never forget you. And I appreciate every opportunity you gave me to serve you these 10 years. To my lovely wife Gwen, that's my wife, my friend, my partner, my buddy. We've been through a lot together, political-wise and health-wise, leading on each other. And she's been there with me every step of the way. And I love her to death. And I thank you so very much for being there with me. I couldn't have done it without you. Not one step could I have done without you. And I thank you for that. My children, all of my children, my grandchildren. You're, you're the backbone of Les Miller. And I look at my grandchildren and my children and thank the Lord for giving me those children. My daughter is a five-time cancer survivor. That's why Martha is so important in my life. My son did get shot while he was in college, my youngest son. He went on to become a police officer. And my two sons, Art and Kent. And my six grandkids, they're the light of my life. And I, I thank them every day. The Lord for them every day, for, for, for him give, putting them in my life. And I tell people all the time, people say, well, I want to run for office. What do you think? First thing I ask them is, is your family behind you? If they're not, forget it. Don't even try it. Because you got to have your family behind you. That's important. Alfredette and Larry, thank you for those years that you've given me and working in that office. I was not your boss. We were partners. We worked together to make that office the best it could be. We did a lot of things for a lot of people in District Three and in the state. We had a state issues, we had a federal issues, whatever the case may be. But you made me the best that I could possibly be in that office. And Larry and Alfredette, I will never forget you. I appreciate you so very, very much and all that you gave me. I gave the people of District Three and the people of this county and that office. Alfredette's going to move on to another position and Larry's retiring. But I thank them for all they gave that office. For Bernadine King, who came with me at the beginning. She stayed with me for a little while, but her son, a successful businessman, had called his mom to come work for her, him out of Las Vegas. And I appreciate her being there with me for that short time. I've known Bernadine all of my life. We grew up together in the same neighborhood. So thank you. But Alfredette and Larry, I will never forget you. I appreciate you so very, very much. To this Hillsborough County staff, I think Commissioner Merman said it. I've been involved with staff on all levels, be it government or be it the private sector. There's no better staff, there's no greater staff, there's no professional staff than the staff we have in Hillsborough County. I'm talking about every one of you, whatever position you may have, whether it's senior management or you're cutting the grass. You're professional in what you do. And I respect you for that and I thank you for that. I thank you for all that you do. This county could not be the county that it is today if it wasn't for the staff. And I appreciate it. Continue to do the great work you're doing. I love you. And you're it. You make this county what it is today, not us, you. And I thank you for that. You know, Mike Merrill hosted my virtual retirement the other day. And I thank you for that. Mike and I went through some battles together, battle scars to show it. But Mike, thank you so very much for the opportunity that we had together as, as partners when you were the county administrator and be as a county commissioner and the chair of the county commission. So thank you. And Ms. Wise, you have some big shoes to fill, but you're, you're doing a great job. And I thank you for, for being there and you have a great staff surrounding you. Thank you so very, very much for, for taking this position and leading this county in the right direction. You're going to do a great job. And Ms. Beck, thank you so very much too. Thank you. To my fellow county commissioners, I'm going to talk to you individually. Ken Hagan, Commissioner Hagan. Yeah, I first met you when you stood up with my wife Gwen, when she had a difficult campaign. And you and your family stood out there in health signs and worked on behalf of Gwen. And I never forgot it and I never will. And I want to thank you for working with me in this county when I first came here. Commissioner Merman, Lord knows, we came here and we had no idea what we're getting ourselves into. We did not. But you, you helped me and you worked with me on some issues. You came into Belmont Heights Little League when that place was faltering. And you worked hard to, to help build it back up. You brought me on board with you. And I didn't know where to go, how to do it, but you did. And I thank you for that. And you're like a brother to me. I tell you and Mike Merrill, we're brothers. And I appreciate all that you've ever done for me, my family. And I look forward to playing golf. I'm going to outdress you. I probably will never outplay you. But I look forward to that day when we're able to get out there and continue to do the work. You're probably going to be here another 25, 30 years anyway. So we look forward to, to working with you together outside this community, outside this commission, as we get out in the community there. Commissioner Merman, I love you to death. We go a long way back and, and work in this community, in this county, in this state. And I look forward to working with you in the future. We're not done yet. We still have some things we have to do. And I know we're going to do them together. Yes, you brought some very nice ties. And I appreciate that. But I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your honesty. I appreciate the love that we shared together for all these years. And thank you so very, very much. Commissioner White, no, sir, we have not always agreed on issues. We've had some difficult issues we had to battle. But one of the things that, that you always did is that you respected my decision and I respected yours. And I will always respect you for who you are. You steadfast in your beliefs and that's what you're supposed to do. You're always going to be steadfast in your belief, whether people agree with you or not. Do that. But you always have been able to listen before you make your decisions. And that's the important thing. Yeah, that story that I told you about back in the days of Commissioner Merman, can you remember that? When we used to be fiercely battling on the floor of the Florida House and the Florida Senate. And after that, we would go out to dinner. I remember one of the best times I ever had was with, when Jim King was president of the Senate. And he and I went to this restaurant and Jim King gave me some alcohol. And that, next morning, I don't know what the hell happened to me. But I was with Jim King, the president of the Senate. He was a Republican and I was a Democrat. But we were able to, to talk together and enjoy each other. So I hope that some way, somehow, we can get back to that. Because this indifference we have now is just not helping the people at all. So Commissioner White, thank you for your service. Thank you for being there, during some tough times. I appreciate you so very, very much. Commissioner Overman, you got a bright future ahead of you. I've seen your work and your concern for, for the kids of this community. I've seen your work and your concern for your constituents. I see your work and concern for those who are down and need help the most. That's the important thing that you have to continue, to continue to do. Work on their behalf. Never forget them. They, they don't have a voice. They don't, they don't, they don't come knock on your door to tell you all the things that's going on with them. You have to get out there and see what's going on and continue to, to struggle with them. And I see that in you. And you have a bright future. And I hope you continue to do that. You have my phone number. I'm here for you. Commissioner Smith, you, you've always advocated for your area. You've always advocated for the environment. You've always advocated for the, the growth of this county and where it's going. Thank you for doing that. And I ask that you continue to do that. This county is, 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 is going to continue to grow. But we've got to have well-planned growth. And the transportation aspect has got to be first and foremost. I don't know what the Supreme Court's going to do. But regardless of what happens, we still have to put transportation as a number one priority in this county. Because without that, we can't have any type of growth within this county. But it's going to grow. But we have to have well-planned growth. And we just can't shut growth down. And I understand where you, what your feelings might be. We just can't do that. So I hope that all of you could work together to, to help this county be the best it could be in that growth. And Commissioner Kemp, the same with you. I appreciate all the work that you've done through this, in this county through all the years. And now you sit there as a county commissioner. That you all continue to work as this county moves forward to make it be the best it possibly could be. And I thank you for all the work that you've done. And I look forward to, to hearing about what's going on in the future. As I say, I'm not leaving Hillsborough County. I'm leaving the county commission. So I'm here for you, each and every one of you. And to the two county commissioners that are elect, county commissioner-elect Myers and Cohen. And all of you. The people that elect you are the people that you have to work for, regardless of their race, creed, origin, sexual, who they love, how much money they make. That doesn't make any, that doesn't come into play. It's, the, the work you have to do is for their lives. And as you come on this commission in the future, please, please remember that all of the people deserve all of the work that you can give them. Not a handful that live here, not a handful that live there. We get elected from districts, but we're Hillsborough County commissioners. That's the important thing. The district elect us, but you have to work on behalf of all the people in this county. Every one of them. You're going to disagree on issues, no doubt about that. But don't hold grudges if someone does not agree with you. I have the, probably the most divisive issues that we've had on this county between me and myself and Commissioner White. But I respect Commissioner White for who he is and he respects me. And I would never, ever forget that from Commissioner White. We've had some, some difficult issues, but the man respected me and I respect him. And that's what we have to do. So we got to work together. This county is the best county in the country. We have bond ratings that other counties wish they could, they dream of having. And that's because of the staff that we've had of Mr. Merrill and Ms. Wise. And we want to continue to have those bond ratings because you're going to need them in the future. We don't know what the future is going to hold. This pandemic is going to drive our budgets up almost to the bone next year. We don't know what the legislative, what the Supreme Court's going to do for transportation. You may have to put another issue back on the ballot, but you got to be very careful how you do that because of this pandemic. But work for the people of this county. Work for them constantly. They deserve it. And for this commission to name something after me. I never thought that that would ever happen. I never dreamed that that would ever happen. And my daddy's name was Leslie Miller Senior. And his name is up there now. I thank you for that. I wish they could see it, my dad, my sister. Just thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Chair. You've left us all a legacy and a great, great level of commitment in community service to follow. Thank you very much for all that you've done for our community. I hope you have a wonderful retirement. You know, obviously from today, that you know, you'll be greatly missed. And we will never forget you. Unless there's other, other commentary, and I don't see hands raised. I see Commissioner White's hands raised and Commissioner Kemp's raised, but that may be from leftover from before. Yep, that seems to be the case. Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Well, this, Commissioner Kemp, are you there? Well, this concludes our farewell ceremony. So Chair, the meeting's yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. The only item we have left are future discussion items.
I have one before I leave. Commissioner Overman had an equity study that was passed a while back. And I know there's some work that's being done toward the equity study. Let me say this. This country, this, this state, this county, this city, on the verge of a civil war. Because there's so much divisiveness. And that's not where we want to go. That's not where we should be, that's not what we should be looking at. We should be coming together as a body to try to heal the wounds that have been so divisive over these years. One of the ugliest signs that was put forth this past weekend in some of the marches, a Fox reporter had to stop his, his, his report because the sign said, blacks and Indians, we're coming after you. This is 2020 and you see that kind of stuff. We've got, we've got, we can do better than that. We could do better than that. We've got to be better than that. We must be better than that. I've been talking to Councilman Goos about some things that he had and put in place in the city of Tampa. And I know we had the resolution that was passed here that Commissioner Kemp brought forth a couple of weeks ago. And I told him, I said, we can't have two different groups doing a lot of things. We need to come together, work on that. He agreed. And I know the city of Plant City and the city of Temple Terrace would probably want to work with us also. So this equity study is going to be important. And I'm going to ask staff that when you do that equity study, involve the city of Tampa and Councilman Goos and his folks. I know you'll be involved in Hillsborough County and our diversity group, but involve Plant City and Temple Terrace. And let's come together and sit down and try to learn each other's backgrounds, where we come, came from, what our thought processes are, what our dislikes, our lacks are, so we can stop this divisiveness that's tearing us apart. Tearing us apart to the point that it's gotten so ugly, it reminds me back in the day when I was a child. And that's, that was the 1950s. This is 2020 going into 2021. We can't afford to have this. So this diversity study, please, when it's done, let's not put it on a shelf and let it draw dust. Get involved with Councilman Goos and the city of Tampa. Get involved with Temple Terrace. Bring Temple Terrace in. Bring Plant City in. Bring every aspect of this community in, and let's sit down with our diversity group and work things out, and let this equity study be a healing point. Let people be jealous of Hillsborough County and say, look what they're doing. We need to do the same thing. We need to bring everything together. We need to work together. It's been too much divisiveness over these years. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. We can do better. We must do better. That's my future discussion item. I won't be here, but I'll be watching. If you need me, give me a call.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Miller. And, and I do want to thank the entire board for supporting that effort for the, the equality profile and equity profile. I, I will commit to you, it's not going to sit on a shelf, and it is going to be collaborative across all of our communities and across all of our county. That is, that is the way that we're working on developing the RFP as we speak. So I thank you for reminding us how critically important that is to our success as a community. And, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just have a brief item. It's a heads up about a commissioner item I'm going to be bringing forward in December. I've been working with some local union representatives on an initiative to support apprenticeship programs and construction projects at the county. Broward County has a similar program as well. Councilman Vera is leading a similar initiative at the city of Tampa. And this is a way we can create opportunities for training and experience here in Hillsborough County. So I'll be bringing that forward, and wanted to give everyone a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Any other future items? Any other future items? Seeing none? For the last time, we adjourn.